Long standing, please take instruction from the staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And the meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted, however, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Ali. I'll ask each member now to introduce themselves, starting by themselves. I'm Alan Mudcock, I represent the East Ecclesney Old Ward and I'm the Chair for today's meeting.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Chaplin, I'm the councillor for Southie Ward and I'm joint Chair of this committee.
Hello, I'm councillor Nicky Bellfield, I represent for Park Ward.
Mia Drazek, councillor for Park and Alberton.
Mark Whitaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Hello, I'm Janet Ridler and councillor also for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
I'm Nigga Bishara, councillor for Netheredge and Sherrill Ward.
That's councillor Brian Homshaw, councillor for Brumhill and Sherrville.
Henry Notte, councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Good afternoon, my name's Diane Hurst, I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Councillor Dennis Chapman, representing Mosborough.
Councillor Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Williams, I'm the elected member for Stanley to Moore.
Thank you, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, Chair. We've had apologies today from councillor Tony Downing and his sub is Mia Drazek. We've had apologies from Marianne Elliott and her sub is Brian Homshaw. And we've had apologies from Gary Weatherall and his sub is Diane Hurst. Thank you, Chair.
Do we have exclusions of public and press? I don't think there is.
No.
Does any member have a declaration of interest? Brian?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to declare I'm not going to be taking part in any discussions or voting on item seven, which is footpath. I was in some detailed discussions with the planning officer as award councillor over this well before I knew I was going to sub on the item, so I think it's best if I don't take part in that.
Thank you, Brian. We're now go to the minutes of the previous meeting. Can we take those as? Okay. Thank you. Site visits, they will all be sent to your diaries, as usual. Thank you. Now go to item seven, proposed extinguishment of footpath linking Clark House Road, Dorset Street, Brumhill, Sheffield S10. Mark, please.
We're seeking approval to make an order under section 257 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990 that will extinguish a public path as shown on, as shown as a solid black line on the plan included as appendix A with the report. Closure of the path is necessary to facilitate development by Sheffield University, a development for which planning permission was granted conditionally earlier this year on the 16th of August. A condition of that planning permission is that a new public path will be created through the new development as shown as a broken line on the plan included. This will provide, this will provide on the western side and connect Clark House Road and Dorset Street where an existing access is situated. In common with the existing path and due to the level differences between Clark House Road and Dorset Street, some sections will require steps to be provided. As such, it is considered no less convenient than the current path. The university will dedicate this new path as a public right of way and maintain the path in perpetuity. So the first slide shows the entrance, general entrance to that side of the university. The path is just where you can see the pedestrian there. You have the next slide, please. You can see that the path is, as it is demarcated there, goes along the right hand side, goes towards the landing area. Next slide, please. That follows down the steps, these are the steps I referred to earlier. Then, next slide, please. Continues towards the bench, through to the right of the bench, you can see a gap there. It then takes a left turn. Next slide, please. Comes out at the top of this site, which is just the right hand side of the playground, and then joins in with Dorset Street. This is the new proposed route, you can see it's an orange line there. The part at the bottom, there's an L shape, that exists already but that will be improved by the university. Next slide, please. So that's, you can just see on the left hand side of that, you can see some quite steep steps there. They, as far as I'm aware, they're, they access currently a private area. Those steps won't be the ones that will be utilised for the new path and new design, where it takes out a greater, seems to be a less steep, so they're staggered. And then it will connect, so you can see a bit of design detail there. Those is an example of the materials that they use. As I've said, these are more in common with the prestige areas in the city centre, such as those in Ramcharta Square. Because of the standard of the materials that are used and the type of steps, the highway authority won't be adopting this path, but it will be dedicated as a public right of way. It'll have the same status as any publicly maintained right of way, but the university will be maintaining it for the lifetime of that path. Any questions?
Diane?
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask, please, what status the path has now? Are we, with it being maintained as a, will it be enhanced in status? Will it have more protected status when it's redeveloped? And has there been any consultation done at the moment with existing neighbours? And have any comments come back from them, please?
Okay, thank you, Chair. As far as, in terms of consultation, any consultation that's been done already will have been done during the planning process. There will be a full public consultation process when the order is made by the council. In terms of status, the current path was also provided as a planning condition back in, I think in 2008, for the development just to the right of that, well, where it currently goes through. During that process, there was a claim by members of the public for a public right of way through that side, which was acknowledged by the public rights, council public rights away team. Now unfortunately, once that path was provided, it wasn't recorded as a formal path, but given the evidence that we've got previously, we do consider it to have a formal status. However, the new path, which will be provided as a public footpath, will be recorded on the definitive map and statement, and that will take any ambiguity away from its status.
Any further questions? Any comments? Nigga?
I just wanted to say that I think Diane's raised the questions I had. I think looking at and being around that area, I think one part was shed by many users, you know, dangerous when you're coming down, but there was an aside path and when cars were going down, and it was a bit difficult knowing you could easily struggle to cross that. So I think, after consultation and everything, if people are fine with it, I think it's a good, good thing to be put in place, especially what I've witnessed and what I've heard, just to make it safer crossing that bit, so you've got your side path to, you know, walk on. So I just wanted to put that across.
Thank you, Nigga. Any comments? Whitaker?
Sorry, Chair, it's probably more of a question than a comment, there's something that struck me. Right at the end, you made a phrase, the university's committed to maintaining the path for the life of the path. Who decides on what is the life of the path?
Thank you, Chair. As in common with any, any public highway, they can be subject to stopping up orders at any time, subject to the meeting, the requirements, whether it be a development or considered use. You know, it is the life of the path, it could be 10 years, it could be 1,000 years.
Thanks, Mark. Any further questions? Diane?
Sorry, that's just raised another, another point of clarification, sorry, Chair. But if we're accepting this as a public right of way, that would give it more protection than a, than a, just a path that's open to the public, would it not?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the fact that it will be acknowledged as a, as a definitive public right of way gives it full highway protection. It is not a permissive path, the university won't be able to close it without any notice or relevant traffic regulation orders.
Any further comments? I'll go to the vote, we're going to hold a vote by raising hands today. So, all those in favour? Just Brian. Against?
Abstained.
Abstained? Thank you, that's passed, thank you very much. We'll now move to item eight, tree preservation order 482, five Buckingham Close, Sheffield S8, 7be. That's Vanessa, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm seeking confirmation of TPO 482 at Five Buckingham Close, which is in Sheffield S8. The TPO was served on the 20th of June to protect a group consisting of nine oak trees within the curtledge of Five Buckingham Close, and you can see a copy of the order with its accompanying map at appendix A. I believe actually we may also have a slide which shows the, a picture of the trees. The site was subject to an application for an outline planning permission, which sought to erect a dwelling in the garden, but due to the presence of a floodplain, the dwelling will be located near to the trees and require removal of five of them. Multiple issues were identified with the proposal, which drew several, or 22 objections from members of the public. Council landscaping officers raised concerns regarding the impact of the proposal to trees on the site. Given these concerns and because the trees are not located in a conservation area and therefore not afforded any other form of protection that would prevent their removal, landscape officers requested I visit the site to assess the trees for their suitability for TPO. This was conducted on the 24th of May. The trees were individually inspected, their visibility from several vantage points assessed, and they were found to be a group of mature oak, ranging in size from 40 to 70 centimetres stem diameter, devoid of any major defects that would compromise a potential retention span of the trees, which is estimated at 20 to 40 years. The trees have had cattery sheds built in their RPAs, or root protection areas, sorry, but this is historic, and they appear to have coped well with this. Though the trees are individually suppressed, as is usual for trees that have grown in close quarters to each other, they form a group which is pleasant and uniform in its cohesion. The group distinction is important, as while individual trees within a group may be suppressed and therefore of impaired form, their unity can provide a good degree of amenity that would not be reflected were the trees to be assessed individually. The trees as a group are prominent in its location, they form a linear feature along the rear boundary of the garden between Five Buckingham Lane and properties at 16 to 22 Strelley Road, and you should be able to see some images at appendix C of the trees. They're visible from the highway and properties at Buckingham Close, from above and in between houses on Strelley Road, are visible from Strelley Avenue, and can be seen above properties on Buckingham Lane, which is a busy thoroughfare. Though distinct from the nearby Chancet Wood, the trees appear to be a relic of the woodland's edge, which has now been separated from the woodland proper through the creation of Strelley Road. Chancet Wood itself is designated as ancient semi-natural woodland, and it's also designated as a priority habitat as well. Though their separation from the wood proper diminishes any special habitat status they would otherwise derive in this regard, they undoubtedly bring a range of benefits to the area, due to the habitat and ecosystems, ecosystem benefits they provide, particularly with regard to flood attenuation, which is relevant to the site. A tempo assessment was conducted on the 14th of June, you can find a copy at appendix B. The trees that were determined as being worthy of inclusion with the TPO were T8 to 16, that designation, those T numbers were the numbers that were on the tree survey that appended the planning application. There are three objections to the TPO, they're summarised as follows. The amenity of the trees is disputed given the high number of other trees in the area. The TPO has been served to thwart the planning application, which is improper. And in reply to that, the submission of a planning application may provide the local authority with a basis on which to consider it expedient to make a TPO. A planning application may indicate an intention to remove trees which have sufficient amenity value, this was the case with the order. However, a TPO cannot thwart a planning application because if planning is then granted, and if the implementation of that permission requires the removal of trees under protection of a TPO, the authority's content isn't required for those works. And as an addendum to that, the decision whether to grant or refuse a planning application is made either by an officer or the committee, and it takes into account material considerations relevant to the application at hand. This includes weighing the balance of whether an application should be refused versus a potential loss of trees which are suitable for a TPO. The trees have not been, well, one of the objections states that the trees have not been assessed using a proper system of amenity evaluation, and that the retention span, visibility, other features have been misused. The amenity value of the trees has been assessed using a proper system of amenity evaluation and by an officer with the appropriate experience and qualifications to undertake such an assessment. The assessment that's been used is Tempo, which is described by the author who created it as a field guide to decision making, containing an amenity assessment and an expediency assessment and a decision guide. It's widely used by many local planning authorities as it covers all of the factors that the current government guidance asks us to consider when we assess amenity. Using the system and drawing on the expert opinion of the officer who considered a range of factors, not just visibility, the trees were found to have the requisite amenity and expediency to merit protection. There's an objection that states that the TPO system is flawed and it penalises only those who plant trees. The TPO system is not intended to penalise anyone. Parliament as a supreme legal authority has legislated to give the council the power to protect specific trees and to prevent certain activities from being carried out. It's not intended as a, yeah, as a punitive measure. Finally, there was an objection stating that the TPO doesn't include enough trees excluding T7, which is a large oak. And unfortunately, I mean, this tree was considered as part of the tempo assessment, but it was not found to have the requisite amenity value, which is why it wasn't included in the group. And that's specifically because the trees were given, the trees were considered as being of high amenity because of their unity as a group, and this tree stands somewhat distinct in being on its own. Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa. We have two speakers today, both against the application, the first one being Bill Anderson, please. Phil's going to start. That's why, yeah.
Mr Holmes is the owner of the trees. Yeah, I would have been legally entitled to remove these trees at any point since I've lived there, which was since 2001. And when I put the application in, I was advised not to do that, you know, to act in a honourable way. We're only talking about the removal of two trees anyway. And the only way they would ever have been removed is if the application had been granted, which obviously you're in charge of anyway. There was never any intention to remove the trees in any other case. And I just feel that the issuing of the TPOs was purely done as a method to get me to withdraw the application, to coerce me into withdrawing the application, which I did. And I just feel that this is a misuse of power. You know, I've tried to protect the amenity and the trees and the, you know, which I, which I own and have been a benefit for the community. And, you know, I feel that I behave properly and I feel that it's a misuse of power just to bring an application to a close by, by use of preservation orders on trees. And I don't believe that that was when initially people conceived of TPOs that they intended them to be used for that purpose. So anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, 40 years ago I was asked to remove all the trees in a man's garden. Why, I asked? The trees were not particularly large or special. Because, he replied, in the next 10 years I intend to get a dozen houses built in this garden, and I don't want the trees to interfere with my plans. I did not understand this at all. This man would rather go to the trouble and expense of this and then spend 10 years staring at an open space, rather than risk trees interfering with his scheme. Since then, I've always gone out of my way to explain why tree owners didn't need to sacrifice their trees just in case they might one day get planning permission. I also assume that councils knew better than to use trees as a reason to refuse planning permission, because all that would lead to is people removing trees just in case, or worse still, not bothering to plant them in the first place. Which brings me to this case. Mr Holmes, Phil, sought permission to build in his garden two, three years ago. I inspected the site and the trees, realised that two or three out of the nine in his garden might need to be removed if he got planning permission, and advised him accordingly. Whatever happened, his garden would still make an excellent contribution to the local tree stock. I deliberately did not advise him to remove the trees, as this would have been a waste of his money, to do something that should not have any bearing on the outcome of his planning application. The council's assertion, therefore, that these trees were under threat, and it was therefore expedient to protect them with a TPO is fundamentally wrong. In fact, the TPO on nine trees here, when most of them would be unaffected by the planning application, looks suspiciously like bullying behaviour by the council. Phil's been singled out from all the neighbouring households and ordered to grow trees, when really the people who need bullying to grow trees are the ones who don't have any. And from that angle, it seems very much as though he is being penalised for making a large contribution to the environment over many years. This is fundamentally unfair, and the reason why the government guidance was written, and why it should be followed properly. The government guidance states quite categorically that orders should be used to protect trees whose removal would have a significant negative impact, which is plainly not the case here. These trees can barely be seen from the surrounding streets, only the tops can be seen, and these pale into insignificance against the backdrop of thousands of trees in the adjoining Chancet Wood. The government's advice contains instructions as to how to appraise trees and orders councils to develop structured systems of amenity valuation. The council have not done this, and instead use a system called Tempo, which would be fine, except for the fact it does not follow the government's guidance. The guidance states fairly categorically that for a tree to be TPO worthy, it must be more than merely visible. But Tempo allows a tree that is nothing more than alive and visible to meet the protection threshold. I'm aware that many LPAs use Tempo, but in my experience, they usually use it because it allows them to take just about anything. The expediency aspect of Tempo is also twisted to increase the threshold, the score, and help it meet the threshold. In this case, the expediency amounts to almost 20% of the total score. Expediency should be looked upon as a binary factor, it is or it isn't, and in this case, it plainly isn't. I also note that the Tempo author has currently removed it from his website, he's aware of its misuse, and also that it requires updating. I also happen to know that he's fed up of being asked for his opinion on its use by tree officers, who clearly think that all trees should be protected, which is not the case. Had that ever been the case, ever been the government's intention, we wouldn't have TPOs, the Forestry Act would just cover them. I note that this TPO is ahead of two planning applications and being considered by the planning committee. This is not a planning application. The only way this matter can be looked upon as an application is if the committee were to consider this as an application from the council to take control of Mr Holmes' trees. From that, you should see that you are not here to consider the trees, you're here to consider whether the council officers have properly followed the government guidance, which it is plain they have not. The order's been served to interfere with the planning application, which is, should not be a reason to serve an order. They've not undertaken an amenity valuation that complies with the government guidance, and to top it all off, they've not considered objections properly. The guidance states fairly categorically that as both proposer and judge, an LPA should take steps to ensure they are being fair and to be able to demonstrate that they have behaved in a fair and open-handed manner. Having the tree officer serve the order and then consider the objections is not fair to Mr Holmes, and actually not fair to the officer either. In summary, it was not expedient to serve this order, the trees were not under threat, and I and my client both went to some lengths to ensure that the trees were left alone until such a time as it was necessary to do something. Furthermore, the trees cannot be clearly seen from the surrounding streets, and there is no suggestion that there is anything else that might contribute to their amenity value. Thank you.
If you will. Vanessa, we like it, come back.
Did we find the slide at all that shows an image of the trees? Or is it not, is it not turned up? There wasn't one, okay, I think I submitted one, it doesn't matter, it's an additional point. Okay. Just to go back to some of the points that were raised. The trees could have been removed at any point, that's very true, and I'm glad that you advise people to not do that because it is an improper way round to do things. Trees are a material consideration on a development site, and the government guidance, planning policy tells us that we need to try and retain important trees on development sites where possible, and where not possible, we need to mitigate their loss through replanting. So I'm pleased that the process has worked in this sense, that you have done a tree survey, and that landscape planning officers were able to ask me to come in and assess the trees worth. That doesn't mean that this was used to thwart a planning application, it's just part of the process. It's unfortunate that the building has been placed where it is because of the floodplain, but that's outside of my control. My role here isn't to thwart a planning application, I'm merely here to assess the trees and assess whether their amenity level is such that we think it's expedient to serve a TPO to protect them. And that the planning application was then withdrawn is outside of my control. You said that there were two trees that were signalled for removal, that is not what I was told when I was on site by yourself, Bill, it was five trees.
Can I just say, the plans were altered from when I first looked at it.
I'm sorry, I just.
I can only go off the information that was given when I was on site. The architect's drawings showed two trees, but when I queried that, it was actually five. And the reason that the trees are TPO- And the reason that the trees are TPO'd as a group is because their amenity value comes from their cohesion as a whole. They're quite suppressed trees, as trees naturally are when they grow in close contact with each other. And so I didn't want to assess the trees individually, it was their contribution to the local area as a group that was important. I don't think that the, I don't think that there is any misuse of the TPO process in this instance. I don't think that it has been used improperly. Tempo, as far as I'm aware, and we've gone into this issue multiple times, so I don't want to labour it. Tempo does cover all of the major categories that the government guidance suggests that we consider when we consider amenity. The trees were appraised fairly. And yeah, I don't think that we can pick holes in Tempo in that regard. It is entirely possible, you said that trees using Tempo meet the threshold if they're visible, merely visible and alive. But that's not the case. It's entirely possible for trees to not meet the minimum level necessary to be considered as suitable for protection, and at that point, the Tempo assessment ends. There are multiple trees that I see in the city, day in, day out, that don't meet that criteria and therefore not put before the committee for consideration, for confirmation in TPO. And finally, yeah, the matter of expediency, I think you misunderstand how Tempo is used in that manner. The amenity level is the amenity level and expediency comes second. So either the trees meet the category for amenity, which these did, and then we consider the expediency, or they don't meet the lower limit for the amenity assessment and we disregard them. With regards to it's not expedient to confirm the order or make the trees subject to an order, I think that it is. There isn't anything else to protect these trees. We've had a planning application put forward before us that states the removal of five of them. Were the tree, were the order not to be confirmed, there would be nothing to prevent their removal, and I would expect that perhaps that would be the case. Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa. Members' questions, please. Vicky.
Thank you, Chair. Not so much a question, but just flicking through the papers on this rather than the slides, I think it's page 42, which seems, I've sort of, it's got the photo that you were referring to, that seems to be the best one, where you can see the group together. I just say that so others can see it. I don't know if it's possible to get that one on screen. It's just obviously the paper versions are in black and white, but that's the one I found most helpful, because I couldn't really picture this until I actually saw a picture. Thank you.
Can I just point.
I'm sorry, Bill, you've had your five minutes. You know, this is for members to discuss now.
I remind you, this is not a planning application. I'm not applying to do anything here.
I'm sorry, but, you know, you've had your five minutes. Thank you. Any more questions? No comments? Mike?
I can see the difficulty that this presents us. And I notice further on in the report, there has been a successful appeal against a TPO. So that's because the inspector did decide that an additional property could be built on the site. But it's clear from, from the report that these trees do provide very good amenity value beyond the gardens to residents and people in the neighbourhood. And at this stage, I'm, I'm minded to support the officer's recommendation. It may turn out at a later date that a planning inspector might decide that an application to build on the site is preferable. Although I notice that the reason given by the planning inspector in the case later on in these documents is to, it was the, the lack of how, it was basically the tilted balance that it was, that we cannot at present show a land, a housing land supply for 4,000 homes. But I was impressed with the amenity value for, in this case, that they are a lovely group of trees. And I do think that the community there would be the poorer for losing them.
Diane?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd quite like to hear an opinion from Vicky on this, because we're flicking between applications here and I'd like to hear a legal opinion on this.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that Council Chaplain's referring to an allowed appeal decision that's been reported to committee in this agenda, and that's on page 109. So that, that was a decision where the council refused permission. And one of the reasons for refusal was regarding the fact that it would involve tree removal of a TPO tree. But as I say, as detailed on page 109 there, you'll see the reasons why the inspector decided that despite the fact that the application, granted the application would result in the removal of a TPO tree, it was still granted permission by the inspector. So I think the point there is that, you know, TPOs don't thwart applications, they're just part of the planning balance. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, right. Any more? Any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think for me, one of the key images is on page 45. It's sort of an aerial shot of the group of trees as I read it. And the removal of five of those, I think, would have a significant impact on the whole feel and character of that particular neighbourhood, and therefore, like Mike, I'm, I'm really minded to support the officer's recommendation on this occasion.
Thank you, Vicky. Any further comments? Nicky?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I'm aware, obviously, of TPOs and obviously the amenity value and stuff like that. My question is, again, just hearing from the presentation as well. How do we make sure, because obviously this I do hear quite a lot, making sure that the individuals or the families or people who are building, they don't feel, as described, you know, the misuse of power? What are we making sure that, obviously, this, the whole purpose is obviously, any good trees? That we make sure they're protected, and I don't think anybody would want to remove them, but making sure that the process it's actually supportive and making sure, you know, this is communicated well. And also, I have actually come across the architect drawings when they're actually presented, when it's actually brought to ourselves. So when it gets to that final stage, sometimes there was some changes made, but that one hasn't been put forward where the decision is made by, for example, yourselves or whatever. So making sure that, how well is that communicated and making sure that people don't feel that, you know, this isn't something against any individual or anything, but it's a process that we're making sure everything is right from both sides.
Vanessa?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't included any, just to take your points separately, we haven't included any images from the planning application in the report, just because it's a slightly separate issue, almost as it were, in that the planning application has triggered my assessment, but I'm kind of quite distinct from any decision that is made with regards to whether the planning application is granted consent or not. In terms of the TPO process being fair, it, I think whenever you TPO trees, there will always be somebody who is happy that the trees are TPO'd and always be somebody that is not happy. I don't think that we can escape that. In terms of the process, I try and follow it as diligently as I can. I look at the trees dispassionately, kind of almost aside from the story that is surrounding them, and just assess the trees based on their amenity value. Using the expert knowledge and, yeah, using my expertise, I guess I'm trying to say, and divorce myself somewhat from, from the story. You know, do these trees meet that kind of requisite high level of, of quality that they would need to be included in the order? And is it expedient, do we think that these trees may be removed? And if they were, would that have a significant negative impact on the amenity of the area? Does that, does that answer your question?
Sorry, kind of, yeah. It was just making sure that people are fully aware. Obviously, I've not been through that process myself, but it's just that when you hear a few who are trying to do the right thing, then faced with this, it's just making sure that they don't feel it's something trying to stop their applications or their, you know, what they're planning. Because obviously, when you look at certain stuff, if it was somebody's home, you're trying to do the best thing, but, you know, sometimes you're afraid, which has been shared before as well, of you might not have the full knowledge of, you know, or accidentally just thinking. And sometimes it has been shared, not yourself specifically, but it's, they've come across and kind of like said, when the individual hasn't been even thinking about chopping the trees, but it's assumed. And that assumption can actually make that family feel really awkward that they've been labelled as somebody who wants to remove trees.
I think I understand, yeah, it's relating back to previous TPOs that have been brought to committee. I think in this regard, it's a planning application, trees are a material consideration. The applicant has had expert opinion from an arboriculturist who is, you know, employed in order to talk him through the process. A TPO is always a possibility, you know, it's always a potential part of any planning application, and I would expect that people would be appraised of that by their own arboriculturist as a potential outcome. And it isn't intended as a punitive thing, it's just part of the process.
Thanks, Vanessa. Any more comments, questions? Vicky?
I suppose based on what you just said, curiosity really. Like my colleague said, we have had cases like this before where it's, people have felt that it is punitive, that they wouldn't necessarily have done it, but you're obviously following the process. And I get the expediency argument that if we did do the TPO, is it reasonable to think they could be removed? Is there not a risk, and this is a more general point rather than the specific case, that people could end up going the way we don't want them to go of, like the gentleman said, removing them before any planning application is put in? Is that like an unforeseen consequence of this?
It's a consequence. I wouldn't say that it's unforeseen. Yeah, people do do that. We've got different legislation coming in, well, it is enforced now by Diversity Net Gain, which seeks to prevent that on larger sites, it wouldn't necessarily apply on a household site. But we get into a situation where we think, well, if we don't TPO the trees and we don't consider them as part of the development process, then they'll be removed anyway. As per, we, you know, make our intentions clear that we may consider trees for protection as part of the development process and protect them and run the risk of people preemptively felling. We can't win, you know, either way, trees are lost. In this regard, we've considered the trees as part of the application that was put forward, their amenity has been assessed and we've moved to protect them. So it's been kind of very clear cut in terms of us following policy and legislation.
Thanks, Vicky. Vanessa?
Yeah. If this is part of a planning application, could it not be a case of TPO the trees that you want to stay and let them take two down? I mean, why do we have to have a TPO on all nine trees? That's, you know, you're still going to have seven trees which would form a real group and be visible everywhere, but why TPO for all nine? That's all.
It wasn't, I wasn't, let's believe it was removal of two trees, it was removal of five, and it would fragment the group and the worth of the trees, their visual impact is as a whole. Individually, the trees are quite suppressed, their worth comes in their unity as a group, and it was the fragmentation of that. And also the development pressures put on some of the trees, which would then be quite close to development, that led to those nine trees being included. Not all of the trees on the site were included, it was just those nine, and it was because of that kind of cohesion that elevated their status.
Anybody else? Well, we'll move to the vote then, please. And again, my hands, we're doing my hands today, raise hands. So all those in favour, please? Thank you, that's passed. I think it was unanimous, wasn't it?
Yep.
Right, we now move to item nine, applications under various acts and regulations. We have two applications here today. Item 9A, one application number 23/03296/FUL, former Goswell Meeting Hall, Cartonall Road, Sheffield. Jacob?
Thank you, Chair. So the application site comprises just under a hectare of land to the south of Cartonall Road. This is a full application for 53 apartments in buildings of up to five stories, and the application is presented to Planning and Highways Committee due to significant public interest in the form of 45 objections and a petition signed by 108 residents. I'll just address the supplementary briefly. So in terms of those objections, there was an objection from Ward members just to confirm that that was from councillors Shafak Mohammed and Roger Davison. That wasn't specified in the report. And then another objection, which was from Ecclesall Green Party, just to clarify that that objection doesn't represent the views of the wider Sheffield Green Party, it was just from the Ward Green Party. The main areas of objection from various residents are density, scale, design, ecology in trees, drainage, traffic, residential amenity, the types of housing to be delivered, and impacts on local infrastructure. And all of those matters I will address in the presentation. The recommendation is for refusal due to the lack of affordable housing, but the officer position is that the amended scheme is acceptable in respect of all other planning matters. So the site is comprised of a vacant 1980s meeting hall and its car park, together with a vegetated basin which wraps around 201 and 203 Cartonall Road, which are the houses to the front. There's a culverted water course running underneath the basin, and you can see heavy tree belts around the site peripheries, and 10 of those trees are covered by a TPO. The site slopes significantly downwards towards the south. To the east of the site are playing fields associated with Mercia School, and to the south is Cartonall Park, including a disused tennis court immediately to the south of the site boundary, and the surrounding uses are otherwise residential. In the unitary development plan, the site is mostly within a housing area, but there's an area of the car park which falls within an open space area, although that doesn't serve any open space function. In the draft Sheffield plan, the entirety of the site falls within a residential zone, and the previously developed area is allocated for housing. So as such, we are supportive of the principle of housing development in this location. This Google Earth screenshot just shows an aerial view from the north west, so you can see towards the left-hand side of that image is Mercia School, and then next to that, the playing field associated with that. And then just to the right of the centre of the photo is the application site, which is that area of hard sanding. And behind that, you've got Cartonall Park, and then you can just see the kind of general character of the surrounding area, which is essentially a garden suburb. So a couple of street view images showing the character of Cartonall Road, so that's looking, looking towards the west at the application site, the house in the distance is number 201. And then looking the other way along Cartonall Road, so the site is on the right-hand side of the road there, and you can note that there's no footpath. And you can note that there's no footpath on the southern side of the road. These photos are on my own now, and they were taken in December twenty twenty-two. So you can see the trees are a lot bare, and it kind of shows the conditions of the site when it's most exposed. So that's again the street scene from Cartonall Road. This oak tree at the site entrance is one of the TPOed trees. And that's number two hundred and one. And then that's number two hundred and one and two hundred and three Cartonall Road, and the site sits just behind those. That's the site access again. And just looking into the site from the access point, you can see how it slopes downwards towards the car park, and then it's surrounded by tree belts. And that's the former meeting hall. And then this shows the basin or ravine, which I believe was formally quarried, hence the large hole in the ground. I think members will recall from the site visit yesterday, since this photo, it has sort of re-vegetated slightly with scrub. Just panning round to show the meeting hall and the ravine. And then this shows the western boundary of the site. The stone building in the foreground is number two hundred and three Cartonall Road. And behind that tree belt at the western boundary, on Cartonall Road, via a private drive. And then beyond that, the house is on Springfield Avenue. And that's the ravine from the other side. And this is the view from Cartonall Park. So looking to the site from the south, you can just see behind that tree belt is where the application site is. And there's the, you can just about make out the tennis court in front. And then this is a series of six bungalows accessed from Springfield Avenue, which just sit adjacent to the park. And the, the furthest away one in that photo kind of sits just next to the corner of the application site. And then finally, this photo just shows a footpath which runs to the west of the site around the perimeter of the Mercy School playing field. And that connects Cartonall Road to Cartonall Park. So this is the landscape master plan for the development, which gives the clearest impression of the proposed site layout. Just to note, the orientation has been flipped here, so north is, is towards the left of the slide. So the original proposal was for sixty-seven dwellings, and it included an additional block within the basin. That block has now been omitted from the proposal. And the amended scheme is just for fifty-three dwellings, and we're only going to show the amended scheme today, which is what members are being asked to vote on. So essentially, there'll be three buildings. Blocks B and D are two standalone buildings towards the front of the site. And then blocks C and E are connected at ground floor level, and they face onto the park. The existing site access would be widened. The majority of the basin would remain undeveloped with a drainage pond, wildflower and tree planting. But there would be some infilling of the land to the front of block B to create the vehicular access down to the basement car park within that building. And there would be a new stepped pedestrian access close to the site entrance, which would provide a link down to the footpath that I showed in the previous image, linking to Cartonall Park. So this is the site plan showing the lower ground floor level, which essentially is just a basement car park underneath block B with some surface car parking and a subs basin, sustainable drainage basin. This is the ground floor site plan. So you can see there's a mixture of ground floor flats and undercroft parking within the individual buildings. The green areas indicate private gardens or terraces, and the yellow areas indicate bin stores. This is the site at first floor level, so you can see how buildings C and E kind of split into three blocks on the upper levels. And then finally, this is the fourth floor plan. So, so the, the first and third floors are very much similar to the previous slide. And then this is the top floor, which shows a five storey element on buildings D and E. And those are, are the buildings that would be situated on the lowest ground and furthest away from the neighbouring dwellings. These are some example floor plans from block B, that's the first and second floor plans, showing the standard of accommodation, which is a mix of two and three bed apartments. And the elevations for building B. The bottom right hand elevation is the one that you would see from the site access. So that's essentially the front elevation facing north. And you can see in the top left elevation, the south elevation, how there'd be two levels of car parking, one at ground floor and one at basement. These are the floor plans for block C, which is a smaller building, also four stories. But you can see from the elevation that it's got more of a domestic character with, with the top story being within a sort of mansard roof structure. These are the floor plans, example floor plans for block D, and the elevations for block D, which is mostly four stories, but it has a five storey element towards the rear of the building, closer to the park. And these are the ground and first floor plans for block E. So you can see that block splits into two from the first floor upwards. And the elevations for block E. And the top one there, the south elevation, gives an impression of what the building would look like from the park. So block E is the one that has a five storey element as well. And the side elevations there. This is the street elevation showing the development from Cartonall Road. So you can see the four story buildings behind the frontage dwellings. They're certainly substantial buildings, but in terms of overall height, they would sit around level with the ridge height of number two hundred and three Cartonall Road. And I'd also point out that there are proposals for some additional tree planting next to the site entrance, which would provide some more screening than, than what's shown on that elevation. And then just some site sections showing the relationship to neighbouring buildings and the tree belts around the site peripheries. And you can just see how the land levels somewhat disguise the, the height of the buildings in relation to Cartonall Road. This is the proposal for a new pedestrian crossing at Cartonall Road, which would consist of a dropped crossing with tactile paving and then coloured tarmac. So because there's no existing footpath on the south side of Cartonall Road, that would provide pedestrian access to the development. And these coloured elevations give an idea of the materiality of the scheme. So the buildings would be finished in buff brickwork in different shades, generally getting lighter towards the top of the buildings, with some metalwork accents in bronze and zinc. And this is an indicative idea of the kind of brickworks that would be used. In the event of an approval, these would be conditioned, so they're not the final brick choices, but it, it's an indicative indication for how the buildings would be finished. And finally, some illustrations of the scheme. So this is from the site access. Just to note that building D, which is in the foreground, has been slightly amended since this illustration was done to set back part of that front elevation. And then this shows the view from Cartonall Park. Primarily, you can see block E and block C from there. And you can see on block E, there would be this kind of steel grid on the rear of the building that would contain the balconies and provide a sort of layered facade effect to address the park. And finally, a bird's eye image, which is taken from a similar angle to the aerial image shown earlier. So you can see the development just to the right of the centre of that image in the context of the surrounding buildings and Mercy School and the playing fields in the park. So I'll talk through the key planning issues for this application. In terms of principle, as discussed earlier, the principle of housing development is acceptable in accordance, in accordance with current and emerging policy. Looking at density and housing mix, the amended proposal would deliver thirteen two bedroom flats and forty-three beds, which is considered appropriate in this location to cater for a range of households in the area, including families. The density would be fifty-four point one dwellings per hectare, which is just above the upper limit of fifty dwellings per hectare set out in the core strategy. But that policy does allow for densities outside the range where they achieve good design. And we do need to be mindful of the council's housing land supply position. So because we can't currently demonstrate a four year housing land supply as required by the MPPF, there is a tilted balance in favour of housing development, especially where that makes effective use of brownfield land. In terms of design, the buildings would be taller and larger than the typical local vernacular, but they've been designed sensitively to ensure that the tallest sections are set away from the street and away from neighbouring dwellings, and that the rear of the site would provide a positive presence onto the park. And the materiality and detailing, we believe, would be of a high quality. In terms of amenity, the proposed dwellings would all exceed the nationally described space standards and would provide sufficient outdoor amenity space. And the development has been designed to avoid impacting neighbouring dwellings in terms of privacy, daylight and outlook, with appropriate separation distances. In terms of highways impact, the estimates for traffic generation based on national data suggest that there would be less than thirty two-way trips generated in the peak hours, so that would not have a material impact on the highway network. There would be thirteen visitor parking spaces and ninety-one allocated parking spaces, meaning that most flats would have two allocated spaces. And highways consider that provision to be appropriate based on local car ownership data. In terms of trees and ecology, the amended plans show adequate protection for all of the TPOed trees and the other trees of high quality, with very few removals. There would be a landscape scheme delivering additional tree planting and a biodiversity net gain of nineteen point four seven percent in area habitat units and twenty-two point zero four percent in hedgerow units. In terms of drainage, the sites in flood zone one and the lead local flood authority are satisfied with the drainage proposals, which would discharge surface water to the converted water course and ensure no building over that water course. Other matters, land contamination reports have been submitted and could form the basis for a remediation strategy in the event of an approval, which would be secured through condition. Renewable energy measures, measures could also be secured through condition, and the site's not believed to have any archaeological potential. In terms of local services, whilst there is demand for things like school places, the development is below the threshold at which education and health contributions can be sought under current policy. So the development would instead be subject to community infrastructure levy payments. So for those reasons, the development is acceptable in all respects, except for the provision of affordable housing, which brings us on to the reason for refusal. So, policy CS forty of the core strategy and the Sillam Planning Obligations SPD set a requirement for affordable housing in this area of the city, equivalent to thirty percent of the development floor space. But the policy does allow for that contribution to be reduced or waived when the full contribution is demonstrated to be unviable. So the council's normal process is to request a full viability appraisal from the developer, which will in turn be reviewed by CP viability, who are our independent consultants. So in this case, the applicant is arguing that any affordable housing contribution would render the scheme unviable. But our consultants, CP viability, find that a contribution of one onsite first home, which is an affordable home ownership model, and a five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five pound committed sum for off-site delivery can be supported by the development, and that would be equivalent to around three point seven percent of the development floor space. So that's a significantly reduced contribution, but that is considered to be viable. So in this case, there have been several back and forth viability arguments, and the parties have been unable to reach an agreement, and the developer is still not willing to make that contribution. The key areas of dispute are the land value, profit expectations, build costs associated with the basement and undercroft parking elements of the development. And there has also been a last minute dispute around the development finance rates, which would affect the cost of the development. I can go into those in more detail if members have questions on it, but I think I will leave that for now. So overall, with all of those things in mind, the council's position remains that an affordable housing contribution could be viably supported by this development. So to summarise, the officer recommendation is for refusal as the affordable, as the housing delivery benefits of the scheme are significantly reduced by the failure to agree to affordable housing, which is in direct conflict with policy CS forty of the core strategy. But I would ask members to note that affordable housing is the only recommended reason for refusal. And the officer conclusion is that the scheme is now acceptable in all other regards. So the implication of accepting the officer recommendation would be that if the applicant appeals, then we would only be defending the refusal on one ground. So that's it from me, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. We have three speakers against the application and one for. So I'll call the first speaker, which is against, which is Gemma Price, please. Put it to the desk and press the right hand button, please. You have five minutes when you start. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Gemma Prince, and I represent the group of houses to the east of the proposed development to which we object. Ultimately, we find that the state of this application to be very disappointing. Numerous concerns have been raised by the local community. However, none of these appear to have any weight in decision making in the face of what appears to be a purely financial decision. We are sympathetic to the need of affordable housing and tentatively support, supportive of a development of the area. But our major concerns sit with the scale and overdevelopment of this space. Even with, even with affordable housing included, we would find this development wholly inappropriate. The report talks to the tilted balance to housing if the design is of, is of good quality, and we would suggest that the numerous public comments against this development and a petition of over a hundred names would point to it being flawed. The report for the, the committee summarises these concerns well, but to no end. The scale of the development and how it will alter the local area to its detriment feature prominently. The design is not in keeping with anything residential in the vicinity, and in our opinion, is bringing a city centre build to a suburban area without the infrastructure to host. Buildings at four and five stories high will become part of the vista for many established houses, and the overbearing nature of its northern aspect can only be of a detriment to residents facing it on Cartonall Road. More objectively, these are far in excess, in excess of the Sheffield Development Plan's allocation of fourteen dwelling houses, and even contrary to CS twenty-six of the development plan, which states for urban areas, which this isn't. A housing density of no more than fifty per hectare, the current proposed is at fifty-four. We have clearly set out multiple objections and inconsistencies with development plan for Sheffield, CS twenty-six, CS thirty-one, CS seventy-four, seventy-four, and the National Planning Policy Framework, UDP, BE five, BE six, H fourteen and paragraph one, three, five. These concerns are only addressed, slightly mitigated by the volume of housing provided to Sheffield as a whole, which is entirely counterintuitive to the sum of the principles these strategies are underpinning. We find what can be determined from the transport report to be inaccurate and optimistic. There appears little acknowledgement of recent development in the area and the massive traffic that is present during school hours, hours already. In our lay opinion, it is hard to see how the entrance to the site can meet safety standards with a hazardous corner and a lack of pedestrian facilities throughout Cartonall Road already. Comparisons to other areas such as Ecclesall and Gray Stars, Greenstones feel disingenuous, with differing housing stocks and established public transport in those areas. It is unclear to us who is expected to take up residence in these flats and their likelihoods to use public transport or cycling in what is a challenging geographical area for anyone who may not be at peak physical levels. Once more, we have raised objections in this area, and we believe there to be contradictions to CS fifty-three of the Sheffield planning, of the Sheffield Plan, and believe the development to be contradictory to para one, one, one and one, one, three of the National Planning Framework, i.e. potentially dangerous and certainly requiring a significant, significant travel plan. More generally, we feel that the scale of this development will have an impact on residents who may not even be aware of this yet. The visual impact will be felt by users of Cartonall Park and will be loom large for residents on Springfield Road, Springfield Avenue, Springfield Crescent, as well as Sunningdale Mount and Hurlingham Close and Beyond. The traffic and coexisting issues will The traffic and coexisting issues will be dealt through, will be felt through the nab and into Nether Edge and very heavily by those at the top and bottom ends of Carton Hall Road, where dangerous junctions already reside. Residents in these areas are highly unlikely to know about this development and its implications. In conclusion, we do not feel that this development will be of any benefit to the local area and will be detrimental to existing and prospective residents. A financial settlement will of course benefit the council but at our expense. Surely there is a way for a more sustainable development to be in place that can benefit all parties and not just the developer, who will simply leave behind the consequences of their actions once they have extracted as much value of the site as they can.
Thank you. Our next speaker is councillor Marva Masters, who's award councillor for this board. Thank you.
Apologies, I wasn't expecting to be called next. Right, okay. I mean, I actually wholeheartedly sort of agree with what's just been said, so I'm going to add to that. Basically, there is a report in the documents, Phase Two, Geo-Technical and Ge-environmental Site Investigation, which suggests some very worrying aspects peculiar to the site. The natural ground does not allow water to be stored within it. What is present on site tends to be water trapped between spaces and disturbed ground. Some surface water can be contained and water flows slowed by incorporating storage to reduce the risk of flooding on site, which has been mentioned. However, the report states, 'Due to the slow infiltration rates recorded, in addition to the depth of made ground present on the site, soakaway drainage is not considered to be viable. A piped connection to the existing drainage network is therefore required.' Surface water eventually drains into the sheaf along with water from numerous other water courses in the area. Water from the site, whether surface or foul water from the proposed development, will all feed into combined sewers. The problems with sewage outflow into our waterways is widely reported. Flooding in the lower sheaf is already a constant worry during times of heavy rainfall. The additional water from a large development as proposed for this site just adds to the pressures on the sewage system unable to cope with current rainfall patterns and existing developments. The proposal is meant to put in measures able to cope with a one in a hundred years event, but we have seen extreme rainfall events occurring much more frequently, so this is no longer a suitable yardstick to judge the adequacy of drainage and flood risk by. We may not yet have in place a local plan, but we do have an emerging integrated blue and green space strategy for Sheffield, which takes a holistic view to water and flood management in the city and beyond. I would argue the size of the development is inappropriate for the site. Building work will be intrusive, again, because of the nature of the natural ground and the need to drive piles deep to support the structures proposed. Building work will also disturb contaminants known to exist on the site. They are to be removed, infilled with a safe surface layer, deep enough to prevent plant growth from drawing any remaining contaminants to the surface or incorporated into the plant itself, which can be ingested by wildlife or humans. Work also risks contaminants finding their way into the water system. A smaller development on this site would be welcome, but not one of a scale by which its nature will contribute to flooding risks elsewhere and increase the potential of health risks to those working and living in that location. I'm pleased that officers recommend refusal, but I feel it's just one aspect of the proposed development that suggests it should be refused. I would ask for their case to be strengthened by finding, by reference to the findings in this report, which goes a long way to explain why the development as proposed will be so costly and unsuitable for the site. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Our next speaker is Mike Hodson, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Mike Hodson and I'm secretary of the Mill Houses Ecclesall and Carton Hall Community Group, which covers this area. Our group has a considerable history of supporting affordable housing in the area, contrary to some suggestions in the past, and preferably on site. Because we are woefully short of affordable housing in the South West, it may not look like it in terms of the general nature of the area, but there is a demand for it and there is very little provision. We have opposed planning applications on this basis, mostly, I'm afraid, in vain. Sheffield has a serious shortage of affordable housing generally and that applies to our area as well. And it means that younger families are unable to stay in the area because there isn't the housing available for them. There's no reason to suppose that this development would actually have improved that situation, quite the contrary. This developer has made a determined resistance to provision of affordable housing. The original assessment for a committed sum was nearly two million pounds on the basis of the first proposals. It's now been reduced on the basis of fewer units down to less than a third of that and still the developer refused to make any such provision. The refusal, the recommendation to refuse is therefore very welcome indeed. However, to echo my, the two previous speakers, there are a number of other reasons why this site should not be subject to a development of this nature. It's overdevelopment, it's unsustainable, there are a whole variety of reasons. And we are unhappy and concerned that the report from the case officer did not recognise some of the nature of the threats to the area from such a development. I mean, in terms of the local plan, for instance, fourteen houses was the recommendation for the site in the draft local plan. Previous applications, some of them withdrawn, were still no much more than that. A fifty-three units development is over the density level set by the council's policy and the maximum level might be fifty, but the average level is less than that. And this is still well over that average level. So, given the hilly nature of the area, the roads being narrow and subject to traffic and so on, the whole reason why this sort of development is not sustainable. And we would recommend and echo the sentiments of the two previous speakers that a report on this actually should show that there's a whole range of reasons why it should be refused, not just the affordable housing. Okay, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Charles Dunn, who's speaking for the application. Five minutes, Charles, thank you.
Thanks, Chair, and good afternoon all. As you've heard, the scheme in front of you is one where we are in complete agreement with officers in all respects but one. We're grateful to your officers for their input, which has challenged the applicant and design team but has been fundamentally very constructive. And I mean, no doubt that the quality of the scheme is as high as it is because of their input and the collaboration we've had across an extensive pre-application and application. As I'm sure you all or many of you saw it if you visited the site yesterday, it's one that clearly holds great potential to be brought back into a beneficial use. While it isn't without its challenges, these have been worked with rather than fought against and the scheme is all the better for it. It will deliver a meaningful number of new homes at an excellent quality while retaining and enhancing the features of the site that make it special and therefore creating a brilliant new place for people to live and improving access for existing neighbours to the open space next door. However, I'm not going to dwell on all of this detail of the scheme that the office has explained already and which is already agreed as being more than acceptable after a really robust and productive planning process. Rather, what I want to do is to share some of my feelings on the crucial point of disagreement, which is viability, as you've heard, of an affordable housing contribution. But moreover, the problems this presents within the broader picture for Sheffield. Within the wider context, it is unfortunately a matter of fact that the emerging local plan is not seeking to deliver the amount of new housing we need as a city. It's also a matter of fact that in spite of best efforts, the start rates in the supply of new affordable housing in the city has slowed to a trickle. Another statistic that has recently been submitted by the council in the local plan examination is that the planned period capacity for new housing in the south and south-west market areas of the city, where we are in this case, combined is estimated to be just two per cent of overall delivery. Yes, that's two per cent in the areas of the city where there is some of the highest demand. In setting this all out, I think it's vital that we all clearly understand that in addition to providing specifically tenured affordable rented accommodation, the nature of the housing market is such that the delivery of schemes just like this is just as important to the affordability of housing as a whole. We're in the middle of a housing crisis and those of us who either inform or actively make decisions such as this need to be really serious in understanding that the answer is to increase supply of all kinds. And it isn't an exaggeration to say I don't think that every single dwelling counts. With that context laid out there, I need to stress that refusing this application will deliver absolutely nothing for Sheffield. Unfortunately, the economics of the situation mean that it will condemn the site to remain a derelict magnet for antisocial behaviour as it has been for further years to come. We understand that the council's viability consultant insists that a contribution can be made, but fortunately, the financial reality faced by the applicant, who is a local developer with a track record of delivering high-quality housing, is that it simply isn't viable. I know you're all used to being told this, but it's for good reason. These are challenging times with very high cost of labour, materials and interest rates and this is a challenging site to develop with various physical constraints, as again you might have saw yesterday. I don't say this lightly, but I also know that there have been several recent occasions in Sheffield where this exact topic has been contested at appeal and the findings of the council's consultant, the same consultant as in this case, have not been supported by inspectors. And invariably, if that is the case, such a process costs city time, money and missed opportunities to actually deliver the housing that's so desperately needed. Alternatively, approving the application will deliver new homes in an area of very high demand, in a great location close to good amenities. It will contribute to increasing housing supply that will in its own small way make a difference to the affordability of all housing in the city. It will contribute many millions of pounds to the local economy through the supply chain, supporting many jobs through its construction. As you've heard, it will secure significant and in excess of policy biodiversity net gain and quite simply, it will make our city a better, happier and more attractive place. I really cannot stress enough how much I feel approving this application is not just the correct planning decision but the right thing to do for Sheffield. I say all of this not just as the agent for this application, but as someone who lives less than a mile from this site, as a co-owner of a business and employer in Sheffield, as a director of the Sheffield Property Association and really just as someone who fervently believes that we have to be enabling schemes like this if we want Sheffield to succeed, not just economically but socially, environmentally as well.
Five minutes, thank you.
Sure, that's about the end. Anyway, cheers.
Yeah, so a few things to respond to there, I think, so I'll go through Gemma Prince's comments first. So I think one of the main things that's been raised by Gemma and other objectors is the scale of the development and this assertion that it would be an overdevelopment of the site or that the design's not in keeping with the character of the area. So I think in terms of design and visual impact, first of all, that there's a number of factors that enable densification on this specific site without detriment to the character of the area. So in terms of the visual impact from Carton Hall Road, the existing frontage dwellings will screen the site quite a lot, as will the trees around the site, boundaries on all sides. The development is quite well set back from the road and because of those land levels, the actual visual impact on Carton Hall Road, I don't think would be detrimental in terms of character. Yes, it would be a change to the character of the area, that's undeniable, they are bigger buildings than those surrounding them. But in terms of the view from Carton Hall Road, there would be significant mitigation in terms of existing landscape features, existing buildings and new planting as well. I think the impact would be felt more from Carton Hall Park and the views of the development from the south. And my view, my view as a professional planning officer is that that would actually be a positive impact. I think green spaces benefit from a sense of enclosure and a sense of overlooking. It provides a sense of active or passive surveillance. It makes the space feel safer, it provides a sense of activation. And I think the, in fact, I can go back and show it. The sort of layered facade effect that would be achieved by block E and then that paired with block C, which has the contrasting roof design, would provide visual interest in a positive way. So yes, it would be a change to the character of the area, but I don't believe that would be in a negative way and I'd also highlight that this isn't a conservation area. In terms of density and the capacity of the site, so yes, we have policy CS twenty-six, which sets an upper limit of fifty dwellings per hectare on sites such as this, but that is caveated by an allowance for good design, which would allow for densities outside that range. I'd also highlight that you'd only need to lose four dwellings from this scheme to get it within the acceptable range and the impact of that on the overall character of the scheme would be minimal. And then again, as I highlighted in the presentation, that's all within the context of the city's housing land supply position and we need to give significant weight to that and we need to apply the tilted balance as appropriate. Concerns in terms of local infrastructure, yeah, GP places and school places, completely understood, but we have a current policy position that doesn't allow us to seek contributions from developers for additional school or health places in that respect. So whilst there is a need that we acknowledge, that's currently expected to be funded through SIL contributions and the local plan, if adopted, would change that position, but under the current policy framework, there's not anything we can do to request contributions. That would be unreasonable in terms of our current planning policy. Moving to the transport impacts and whether the transport assessment is misleading, saying that it doesn't account for Mersey School. I think the transport assessment has been undertaken with an analysis of the existing character of the area and surrounding roads. The traffic generation is based on unreliable national data on similar developments or actually developments that are in more remote locations or which are more traditional family housing rather than apartments. So we don't think that the trip generation estimates are incorrect or raise particular reason for concern. The site access, yes, it's on a bend in the road, but the site access design does show appropriate visibility displays to ensure that vehicles exiting the site would have good visibility in both directions. So that's something that highways are happy with. Just, I guess, another one in terms of the visual impact, I think Gemma talked a little bit about the buildings looming large over the park and the surrounding streets and surrounding dwellings. I would just highlight that in terms of visual impact and design, we're looking at the impact of the development from public views. So the impact on the street scene and where the site would be visible from the park and other green spaces, views from a private property are not a material planning consideration. So I will move on to councillor Masters's comments. So the site investigation reports that are referred to and issues that she's raising in terms of drainage. So yes, the drainage reports and the contamination reports found that the existing ground conditions wouldn't allow for infiltration. So soakaway drainage is not viable and it's not being proposed. The proposed drainage strategy here is to discharge surface water to the converted water course in the north of the site. The proposed drainage strategy here is to discharge surface water to the culverted water course in the north of the site. Um, that would be via a SUDs attenuation basin and then an underground attenuation tank as well. And so that would limit the flow of surface water into that culverted water course. Um, uh, in terms of allowance for climate change as well. Um, the foul, uh, sewage discharge would be to the public sewer. But Yorkshire Water have reviewed that and they've had no objections to that in terms of, uh, capacity of the sewer. Um, and then, uh, the concerns that were raised, raised about the building works, uh, so the construction stage and how intrusive that would be. Um, the impact on residents and on the local environment of construction works are covered by separate legislation. But given the, uh, given the proximity of neighbouring dwellings, if we granted permission, we would also be looking to condition a construction environmental management plan, which would deal with noise, dust and pollution impacts of, um, of the development. So if the application were granted here or through an appeal, then that is something that we would seek to impose to protect local residents and the environment as well. Um, so I'll move on to Mr Hodson's comments, um, which I think mainly were, were highlighting the, the affordable housing issue. And, and I appreciate that, that that reason for refusal is welcomed. Um, and then, uh, highlighting again similar concerns to Gemma in terms of overdevelopment and, um, the supposed unsustainability of the proposal. So I think in terms of sustainability, um, my view would be that this is a scheme that makes effective use of land. It's brownfield, previously developed land in, uh, the main urban area of Sheffield. And that makes it a sustainable location for housing development. That's why it has been allocated in the draft local plan. Um, this, this capacity of fourteen houses, uh, that's been put forward in the local plan has been cited on a number of occasions. So first of all, I'd just highlight that the local plan or the Sheffield plan has very limited weight at present because it's at, uh, it, it's not completed the examination in public stage. Um, and then the other thing I'd say about that is that, um, the capacity estimates in the local plan are just that they're a capacity estimate and they use a fairly broad brush formula and to put forward an estimation for the number of dwellings that could be, be delivered on the site. That's not an upper limit, it's just an estimate. And in a lot of cases, the, the strategic planning team have taken quite a conservative approach to those estimates um, in order to demonstrate to inspectors that, that housing projections, um, for the, the planned period are not unrealistic. So the fourteen houses in the local plan can be afforded limited weight and, um, and it's, it's just a capacity estimate, it's not an upper limit anyway. So even if, even if that plan were adopted, that wouldn't be a reason that we would cap, uh, the development at a specific level. So, um, finally turning to Charles's comments. Um, so as he said, there's plenty of areas of agreement now that we've reached between the parties, now that we've got the amended scheme, which we do agree is a positive proposal except for, um, the lack of affordable housing. So I think Charles has made some kind of broad statements about the city's housing, uh, supply position. And I wouldn't want to undermine the work that strategic planning are doing in terms of the preparation of the local plan and by commenting on that too much further. I think we just need to look at the merits of this scheme on its own, uh, on its own merits. Um, yeah, I, I think, you know, Charles highlights that, that we are in a difficult economic environment for development at the moment. That is reflected in, in the appraisals that have been undertaken by CP viability. Um, and the fact that the contribution we're asking for is reduced below the thirty percent, uh, policy compliant, uh, contribution by a significant, uh, degree. But, um, and if members have questions on this, I can answer them. But the, the evidence in the appraisals does suggest that a contribution would be viable. Um, and, and I would, I would support the views of our independent consultants on that. And there've been several opportunities for that position to be challenged. And, and we do feel that there's a robust case that, um, when considering the construction costs, the land value and the profit expectations, there would be, um, some, some room for an affordable housing contribution there. So I think I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jacob. Love to mention questions. Please, Nicky, please.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few questions for you, Jacob, and they focus on the main reason for you refusing the finances, the, the money. Um, so you talked about the consultant we employ, who assesses the viability of, you know, how much it costs, how much money they could make and therefore how much they could contribute to affordable housing. So first of all, let's deal with the accusation that it's not a particularly good consultant because we've lost a case before on appeal that was similar. I mean, I don't know the case, but I mean, we can only judge on the, we rely on the experts that you bring to us. So, you know, can you restore our faith in that person and, and their services? Um, secondly, I suppose just a bit, I'm, I'm interested, you started to explain yesterday, how this calculation is made. And I get that there has to be a benchmark of some kind. But how rooted in sort of real commercial value is it? And when, when was it done? And how much does it take account of the sort of things that could affect the price? So, you know, I've mentioned this before, it's right next to the second best performing school in England, if you go by the government league tables. You know, they've, they've moved up the table, Mersey School, both in terms of progress of disadvantaged kids and, um, non-disadvantaged kids. Their catchment is meant to go across the whole of the south west of Sheffield. I've looked at the figures and you have to live in catchment, definitely, to get into the school. Um, but actually, if you look at the near, I think it's like hundred and eighty kids who got in last time, the furthest away any of those kids lived was naught point nine, well, naught point nine of a mile, whatever they, so just under a mile. So basically, if you want to get into the second best school in England, you have to live under a mile within, apart from, um, SEND kids and looked after kids. Um, so how much would, uh, account did our consultant take? How much did they take account of that hugely valuable, uh, asset right next to this, which I don't know, might make it some of the most valuable land for housing in Sheffield, I would have thought. You know, we already, you know, we know that, that there aren't enough school places in the south west of Sheffield. And, you know, there are issues in the rest of the city. So that feels like, I really do want to understand that, you know, how much has that been taken into account? And then, um, yeah, in terms of the reasons that the developer gave, um, you mentioned for them not paying this, things like land value, profit expectations, cus, the cost of the underground parking and finance rates. And you were going to say something more about finance rates. I'd just be interested in that as well. Thank you.
Jacob?
Yeah, so, um, so CP viability, we use them on pretty much all of our schemes that are having kind of viability challenges, uh, put forward by the developer, um, whether that's for affordable housing or other planning contributions. Um, they are appointed by several other local planning authorities in the region as well. Um, we've found them to be consistent and fair and reliable. They're very experienced. They have a lot of experience at Peel. Um, and they have won appeal decisions as well. So we've got confidence in them. Um, and they're, just to confirm as well, they did use an independent cost consultant to assist with aspects of the appraisal as well. Um, so that was specifically the basement and undercroft car parking has been reviewed by a third party as well. So that's, I guess, another layer of independence in terms of their thinking and their review. Um, so how, how do we look at the calculation of viability overall? Um, I'll address the things that you've asked about specifically. So the benchmark land value and how that is rooted in reality. Um, the appraisal is conducted essentially on a theoretical basis. So, um, we use planning practice guidance, which is set nationally. And that states that the price paid for land should not be, uh, taken as justification for failure to comply with planning policies. Um, which essentially means that, um, you know, we're protected from the planning system subsidising a developer for potential overpayment of land or vice versa, the other way as well. Um, so what would happen is that there's a calculation of benchmark land value. And the accepted way of doing this is putting a value on the use of the site as it is existing, so the existing use value. Um, and then applying a multiplier to that. And that multiplier should be, um, or a premium to that. And that premium should be the, uh, minimum, uh, premium that would incentivise a landowner to release their site for development. Um, so essentially you're adding a value on top of the existing use. And, and that would be theoretically what would incentivise a, a developer to release their land. Um, and, and, you know, it's encouraged that, that people engaging in land transactions would consider the planning policies that apply to that site. So in this case, we've got an existing use value that has been agreed between the parties for the site, um, with its current use as a meeting hall and car park. The disagreement is over the multiplier that has been applied to that site, um, in order to generate the benchmark land value. So that premium, um, sorry if I'm getting too technical with this, but, um, so I think the applicant's consultants applied a mul, applied a multiplier of eleven times the existing use value. CP viability, um, have applied a multiplier of five times. And they've been challenged on that several times and they do think it's fair and we agree with them. They've provided several examples of other schemes in Sheffield als, and elsewhere, where a much lower multiplier has been applied. And essentially this, um, this multiplier of, of ten or more, so I think ten to fifteen as a multiplier is something that the applicant's consultants have said is, is commonplace. But in CP viability's experience, that usually applies more to greenfield sites, um, which are generally easier to develop, they're less contaminated. And they also have a lower existing use value because they won't have any buildings or, or businesses maybe on them, they might only have agriculture. So, um, I think, you know, you, you can see on the application file, there are several examples that have been fo, put forward by CP viability, which I think robustly defend the position that we're taking in terms of that objective assessment of land value, rather than the price actually paid for land. Um, things that affect price. So I think you're, you're looking really at sales values here when you're talking about the, the positive impact of Mersey School on sales values. So the sa, sales values in the appraisal have been agreed between the parties. That's not, um, that's not a bone of contention in the final appraisal. That is based on market evidence of, of similar developments in the local area. Um, I can't remember off the top of my head exactly which, uh, which schemes have been used as comparators. But we did all agree that they were fair comparisons and that the sales values agreed were reasonable. Um, yes, viability can change over time. So what we, so in terms of securing the affordable housing, we would have gone into a section one oh six agreement with the developer that would have secured the first home and the commuted sum. What we were also proposing was a third term in that one oh six agreement, which is supported by, um, our SPD on planning obligations. And that would have allowed for a viability review. Um, at, I think it's in the report, I'll just double check what the terms would have been for that. So the, the terms would have been that if the development had not been completed to Eve's height, um, within three years of the date of consent, then there would be a viability review, which would look at up to date data in terms of sales values, costs, um, and everything that, that had been looked at originally. And if any surplus profit were identified at that point, then that would be taken as an additional commuted sum. And I think from the, uh, the letter that was received most recently from the applicant's representatives, they were open to agreeing a viability review. Um, it was just the initial contributions that, that they were not prepared to agree to. Um, I think that the methodology for review was slightly different in, in what they were putting forward. But the principle of a review was agreed. So that would capture that, um, in the event of an approval. Um, finally, you asked about finance rates. So that's a sec, essentially that's development finance. So, um, for most developments, you would have a lender that would provide some upfront, uh, finance to ensure that the, the costs of the construction are covered. And then the developer would have to pay that back. And the finance rate is essentially the interest on that development. So I think a rate of seven point five percent has been agreed throughout the process. Um, the applicant at the last minute then sought to, uh, allow for a higher finance rate in the decision, uh, or in the appraisal because of a quote that they'd had from a particular lender. Um, but CP viability's position was that a quote from one lender doesn't represent the market as a whole. It's not sufficient evidence to adopt a different position.
Thank you. That's really comprehensive. I've just got two quick questions to follow up on that. On that last point, i- i- is it normal for perhaps them to get a range of quotes, something like that? Um, or to go to a broker? Is that normal? And secondly, was there any amount that they were willing to pay towards affordable housing?
Um, I'm not a developer, so I couldn't comment on whether that's normal. Um, it would seem reasonable to get a range of quotes. And I think, um, from CP viability's comments, they looked at schemes, um, at, at rates that had been agreed for different schemes and that's based on past data. Um, so I, I think that provides a more objective assessment than, than a single quote. Um, no, the applicant hasn't agreed to any contribution at all.
Mike? Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, moving away from, uh, questions of viability and the economics of this. Um, can we first, um, bring up a picture on screen? It might be a representation of the view that would be from the bungalows, um, on the, I suppose we're looking west, aren't we? So from the north. Have we got, I mean, I, I understand what we'd see from Carton Hall Road. It's, it's the road immediately to the north and what, what they, what they would have visibility of. And that you, because you've got a couple of bungalows. There's a house, and I think we were on site yesterday. We did see that there was, there was an upstairs window that was set back quite a way. So they, they would see a bit of the front building. Yeah, the building that was forward to the front. But we noticed that, um, looking over the, the park behind, there were a couple of bungalows that were actually quite close. And it was just trying to get a sense of what they, what their view is.
Yeah, so.
In terms of scale.
I'm not sure I, I necessarily have an illustration that would show that view. Um, I think if you, if you're looking at this image, then I think the bungalows you're talking about are, they're essentially facing onto the tennis court to the back of the site. So their view essentially would be unchanged, except maybe the one closest to the development site. Um, as, uh, I probably don't have a visualization that would show. I suppose the closest one would be that one on the bottom there. Um, no, sorry, it wouldn't, no. Um, I think it's best if I just showed the site plan again. So the bungalow you're referring to is in the bottom right hand corner of that image. Um, it's got some, some thick black lines on, on, uh, one side and that represents the habitable windows. So essentially it would sit perpendicular to block E. So it would, it, it wouldn't really, you'd be able to see the development from it. Um, but it would be kind of in its peripheral rather than its direct view. Um, and I, I would again just highlight that a view from a private property isn't a material consideration. We're looking at, um, we're looking at the view from public spaces. In terms of amenity and outlook, then it wouldn't have its, its outlook blocked at all because the development would sit perpendicular.
You're quite right. There's, there's the right to a view as such, but there, there is, um, you, you can get over, overshadowing and, and a sense of overbearing. And I just wonder what the extent of that was, um, to those residents living close to the, close to the development.
Uh, if you don't mind, I, I would just add as well that the block sits to the north of, of those dwellings. So you wouldn't get any overshadowing in terms of sunlight.
Good point. Um, the other question I had, uh, wait, it was picking up on, on Barbara, councillor Barbara Masters's point. Um, if I'm, I may have misunderstood, but you, you covered off about the attenuation tank and the, um, and the dip bit off to the, um, where water, water would gather. bit off to where water would gather in a pond before draining away. But there seemed to be a suggestion that by developing the site, it could have an adverse impact downstream and cause flooding. And I just wondered what, to what extent that was a material consideration for the purposes of this application.
It is a material consideration. Flood risk and drainage are material considerations. But this drainage scheme has been reviewed by the Leeds Local Flood Authority and they're happy with it. Essentially, the rate of surface water discharge into that culvert, into the watercourse, would be limited by the basin and then also the underground attenuation tank. So they're happy with that in principle. If planning permission were granted here or through appeal, then there would be a condition to seek additional details of the drainage design, things like flow control devices. But the principle of the drainage design has now been agreed. And obviously the Leeds Local Flood Authority, their role is to ensure that there wouldn't be an increase in flood risk and they're happy with it.
I hope anyone else, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, going through the application history, most of it sounds like a very good collaborative experience where we've had problems with like the biodiversity net gain for hydro units and the unit trading, and then a good solution's been reached. And we're left with this stumbling block over the contributions. And whilst I understand to a certain extent that things are unpredictable, we're working off an expected profit compared to what will be an actualised profit. Is there no mechanism where we could peg a developer contribution to actual realised profit post-completion rather than theoretical expected profit pre-application or pre-planning?
That is the way that some local authorities do viability review. So I think in response to councillor Bellfield's question, I mentioned this viability review mechanism that would kick in if the development hasn't been completed to Eves Height within three years. That's the approach that's set out in our supplementary planning document on planning obligations. So that's the approach that we would seek to take. Theoretically, yes, you could take a different approach and instead review the actual sales values and costs post-development. But that's not what we do locally. So I think my advice would be to go with what the local approach is in our adopted SPD.
Brian?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your answers up to now. Affordability seems like it's a big concern, but there are a couple of other things I'd just like to unpick and answer a couple of questions on. So the first one is, well, I feel that this is quite a densely built development. It's above the maximum local density standards, for example, with 91 allocated car parking spaces, I think that was the figure. It sounds to me like it needs a good public transport plan though. And looking at that last image, not the one that's on screen now, but your very last one, it did look like there was quite some chunky housing and then an exit entrance, if I can pull that one up, that one, where there's a bus stop nearby that may well need some improvement. But the officer, the report says the lack of improvement to public transport infrastructure does weigh negatively against their proposal. There's been nothing put forward to improve bus improvements to the signage. So given this, I'm going to put forward that a sustainable transport plan should be conditioned as is mentioned also in the report. So that's what I'm going to suggest put forward. So, and I want to know whether, you know, my, whether what I'm saying here is off-beam and, you know, there isn't, there hasn't been any agreement on this. So that's my first question. The second thing is, was there any discussion about a green roof or about solar panels to pay for its own energy use or a combination of the two? Now, I think the combination of the two is coming quite common now on larger-scale developments. So could I ask that second question as well, please?
I might start with the second question if that's okay, because I think it's a simpler one. So there's no current policy requirements specifically for green roofs or for solar panels, but there are policy requirements which have related issues such as biodiversity net gain or renewable energy in general. So the applicant submitted an energy statement or a sustainability statement which said that they would be using solar panels and air-source heat pumps. They've not specified in that statement exactly how much energy that would generate. So if planning permission were granted, we would be seeking further details of that renewable energy generation. That wouldn't have to be solar panels, but that is the indication in the application, in the applicant's submission is that they would use solar panels. I don't know whether that would be on every building or just some of them, but it seems to be part of the intended strategy, although that would be left solely to condition. Green roofs, again, we would certainly encourage. I think given that the site is delivering a biodiversity net gain anyway without the green roofs, it wouldn't be reasonable for us to insist upon green roofs as well when there's no current policy requirement for that. That would change with the local plan, but we can't afford much weight to that at present. So that's why we've not got any conditions on green roofs. So turning to public transport and bus stops, there was a bus stop contribution requested from South Yorkshire Mural Combined Authority, SIMCA. That hasn't been agreed in the context of the wider viability discussions. Compared to the affordable housing, it would be a fairly small figure. I think it was in the region of £11,000. That hasn't been agreed by the developer. And it's not been added as an additional reason for refusal because there isn't a specific policy requirement for bus stop improvements. It's something that we would have supported and we would have liked to see, but taken the overall planning balance and considering that there's not a strict policy conflict there, it's not something that we would consider a reasonable additional reason for refusal. With that said, it would be possible to condition a travel plan, which I don't know whether you're, I think maybe you're recommending that we would suggest that in the event of an appeal. So that's something that we can take away and look at in terms of the suggested conditions if we were going to an appeal.
Yes, I am suggesting that. I don't know whether, how that would be taken forward, given we haven't come to a decision.
Diane, please.
Thank you, Chair. My question was about the SUD scheme, about councillor Barbara Masters', her concerns and about the, about SUDs and about the ground permeability and about the groundwater storage. I believe you said earlier that that has now been resolved because on page 87 it said insufficient data on the SUD scheme was provided. But I believe that you now said that that has been agreed, a position has been agreed going forwards and that the Water Authority or the Flood Authority are satisfied with that resolution.
Yeah, that's right. So the Leeds Local Flood Authority raised significant objections to the original scheme, the main reason being that there was an additional apartment block proposed within that basin directly over the culverted watercourse. That wasn't the only reason that they had an array of concerns, but that was the main one. So this amended proposal, which has one fewer building and reduces the scheme to 53 units, the Flood Authority are happy with that in terms of the drainage strategy that's been put forward. So there was an amended flood risk assessment and drainage strategy submitted with the revised plans.
Voting. Members' comments. Mark?
Yes, on the site visit yesterday, you can pick up quite a lot more from actually visiting it than seeing the pictures. It's definitely in a dip. I didn't even know it was there, this area. Given that we have to have development, we have to have more houses, I think this is an ideal site for development. I don't think it would be too obtrusive because it's in this dip. But I think the lack of contribution to affordable housing is a massive stumbling block. It's already been commented on that the value of the properties can only go up. I therefore am definitely inclined to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I'm concerned about the scale of this, of this proposed development. It seems out of character with the area and I'm concerned about the highway pressures. And I am very concerned about this and so I will be voting with the officer's recommendation, which is against the proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Couple of observations really, I think Cliff, councillor Woodcraft has hit the nail on the head. This is, in my opinion, very out of character with the surrounding area. And I am surprised that's not been raised more as an issue. I am concerned about the entrance. I know it's only a cartoon picture, but if I was trying to turn right out of that, those trees would worry me. But I'd be quite interested in your comments.
Thank you, Chair. Well, yeah, I would say that that isn't really an accurate representation of the access at all. At the end of the day, it has got the required sightlines from there, which are 2.4 metres by 43, and they've demonstrated that on a much better plan there. Okay.
And I think it's a bit disappointing that we're not, and perhaps we could make it as a condition, that actually vehicle charging points should be put in from the start rather than just merely indicating it at some point in the future. Because this area is, although it's a built-up area, from memory, there aren't a lot of charging points in this area. And I think people would struggle quite, if we're trying to encourage people into electric cars as part of our race to net zero, then I think it should be more than just a suggestion.
Mike?
Well, thank you, Chair. I mean, if memory serves, the first vote that's going to come to us is actually on whether to accept the recommendation or not. And if that vote were to fall, then I think we would be looking at other conditions like vehicle charging points, solar panels and mitigation for climate change to support the development. But I'm minded, like other speakers, particularly Mark's comments earlier, not to support this development. Like you, Rich and Cliff, I do have concerns about scale of massing there, but it, given the sightlines of those properties that are nearest, they're the ones that would be affected. The others are set quite a way back and they're looking at properties built in a dip. The other thing in terms of being out of character, the previous meeting that Alan and I were at, it was pointed out that the development is not actually a lot different to the school. So although it doesn't match other properties on the street and the streets nearby, it does, the design of the flats is not out of keeping with the design of the school that Nikki was talking about. The other thing is, it's not a conservation area where all the homes are, you know, built at a certain time. I mean, the nearest ones are probably late Victorian or perhaps a bit earlier, and that's on the street. And then opposite, you've got pre-war semis. And then further down, you've got some that were built later to a different design. And then the street round the corner is different again. So it is something of a hodgepodge of development in the area, although I do accept that most, you know, most of it is residential and there's hardly any shops there. So I'm going to support the recommendation as it stands. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, because you've made some good points, Mike. If we accept the officer's recommendation and it goes to appeal, can we then, is there any scope to putting in conditions at that appeal?
I would ask Vicky to come in on that.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to come in anyway, but I'll just deal with that. Yeah, during the appeal process, the planning inspectorate says if I do allow this appeal, does the planning authority want to make some suggested conditions? So that does happen as part of that process. I just wanted to clarify, I think councillor Chaplin referred to a vote on the officer recommendation. So I just wanted to reiterate to members that at the moment, anybody can propose and second a motion if you wanted to, you know, change the position now. So it's not the case that, you know, if you wanted to, for example, add another reason for refusal, somebody could propose that now and second it and go through that process before you take the vote on the officer recommendation. So I just wanted to make that clear that, you know, if the officer's recommendation vote is passed, then that's probably the end of the matter, we'd move on to the next item, there's nothing, you know, anything happening after that. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, so thank you, Chair. So following that, I would like to propose that another reason for objecting to this is on grounds of massing, of over, you know, too much on the side, was it, overdevelopment, that's the word, isn't it?
We have a proposal for refusal on grounds of development. Do I have a second there? Oh, sorry, Cliff. Richard?
If we were to add overdevelopment and out of keeping, I would be prepared to second that.
I'm prepared to add that to the, as Richard has...
Can we, right, we have a proposal to second there, can we? Vicky?
Thank you, Chair. Could I just invite the planning officers just to comment on those two items? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Vicky. So our view would be that overdevelopment and impact on character would be two separate issues. So overdevelopment would be a refusal in terms of density and the character issue is maybe more in terms of appearance and height. Those two aren't necessarily exactly the same issue, although they are linked. So I don't know if the proposers and seconders would wish to choose one of those or put both of them forward.
I'm happy to choose both of those, I think both of those are relevant.
So, Richard, which are you seconding?
Yeah, I'd be happy to second both of those individually.
Both of them.
Thank you, Chair. You've got a proposal here to add two further reasons for refusal, so I would suggest you take a vote on them separately. Thank you, Chair.
So take a vote on the first one, which is overdevelopment. And we'll do that by hands, please. For, yep, two, against? Eight, four, five, six. Six. Abstained? That's not passed, thank you. Next one is, what's the next one?
Out of character.
Out of character. So can we have a show of hands? Four, please. Two. Against? Nine. And abstained? That's lost, thank you. Right, comments for you?
At this point, I would like to return to my suggestion about a comprehensive travel plan for the area, if I can, as a condition, not for refusal.
Yeah, I think that's just something we can take a note of for the appeal process, maybe it can go in the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, obviously it could be noted in the minutes, but I would just draw attention to page 84. It does refer to a travel plan could be secured through condition. So obviously when we go through this process, what would typically happen is that we would look through the report to see what conditions would have been put in place had the recommendation been to accept. So it's something that would probably get, you know, should get picked up through that process because it's a suggested condition in here already. But as I say, I haven't got a problem with that going in the minutes as something that councils have asked officers to know should it go to appeal. Thank you.
If that can go into the minutes or, and/or be part of a directive, I'm not sure whether that would be appropriate.
Typically, a directive is something we put on the grant of planning permission. Currently, obviously we've got the officer's recommendation here as to refuse. So I'm not sure how useful it would be to put a directive in that. As I say, it's in the report currently, it'd be minuted and, you know, if it were to be refused and go to appeal, I'm quite confident it's something that will get picked up in that process. Thank you Chair.
Absolutely fine by me. Thank you.
Right, Eric?
Yeah, thank you Chair. The property development profit driven and all developments are going to have an impact on the things that the council has to provide in terms of infrastructure, schools, places, traffic and highways network. And I think it would be very dangerous if we started setting precedents where people think that they don't have to make those contributions and that we're not entitled to our slice of the pie because we need that to counteract the impact of development for, you know, local residents and people across the city. And for that reason, I'll be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Diane?
Yes, thank you Chair. I think it's really important that we acknowledge the comments made by the community group about the need for affordable housing across the city. There is a genuine need for affordable housing across the city. And for that reason, I will be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Vicky?
Thank you Chair. Sorry, just going back to what councillor Notte said, just a point of clarification. So it's the SIL money, isn't it, that you're referring to there that pays for infrastructure? That's not, isn't it? I thought it was just the affordable housing they were saying they weren't going to pay for, not any payment towards local infrastructure, or have I got that wrong?
Yeah, that's right. So the SIL payment is levied on every grant of planning permission on the development floor space and that's not something that the developer can negotiate their way out of. That's a standard levy. So the only planning obligation that we would be seeking in this case is affordable housing.
I was referring to the 106 contribution as part of it, goes towards infrastructure in a wider context.
Fair enough. Right, thank you for that. I suppose my feeling, my thoughts are that, I mean, this is an area that has changed a lot, just that street, because of the school, because there's a whole housing development on the other side of the school. And it has changed the traffic and I can appreciate, you know, I go through there frequently and see how busy it is. It has changed the nature of the area a lot. I don't feel that the proposal is that bad. I am concerned that, I mean, these are two and three bedroomed places and they haven't got gardens and I'm suspecting a lot of families are going to want to live there. But I appreciate that everybody wants a garden. But there's been a lot of focus on scale and, you know, sort of, are there too many units? And I suppose all the time I keep coming back to that calculation, even though it's a theoretical calculation. And I also appreciate what the agent said in that we do need housing and we, you know, the way it's set up at the moment, private developers are creating housing and there is a role for that. However, reading through that detail of like the process you went through to get to the different calculations, you know, how much different things were valued. I can see if I put myself in the developer's shoes, that if they bought that land for a ridiculous price, which I know is not a consideration we can take into account, that they could be worried that they might not make enough profit off it. And it is a profit-driven process that they're involved in. However, given all of where that site is, you know, the fact that you're guaranteed a place pretty much in the second best school, you know, I have no doubt that the real, as opposed to theoretical value, will go up as it keeps going up in that area. And I think they will be able to, you know, I think it's more likely that they're going to be able to afford it. So I am reassured by your arguments and, yeah, I think I'd be voting to accept your recommendation.
Thanks Vicky. Nigga?
Yeah, just emphasising, just for clarification. You mentioned for each, there's two allocated parking spaces for each of the dwelling. And my other concern was, but I think you've addressed that, the lack of environmental assessment. I think you've explained that it's actually been looked at and addressed and that's something that has been, it's not been ignored. And the other thing I would like to hear is, I think it's in the, on page 59, it was about, you know, the concerns and lack of engagement with the local community. So in terms of, you know, the
Nigga, I'm going to have to stop you there because we're into comments, not questions.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we've done questions, we're into comments now.
Right, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I am pleased to see that this is a development not of one bed or studios. I'm pleased to see it's two-bedroomed or three-bedroomed for family groups, which makes a change. And I do agree that it doesn't look that different to the school further down the road, building-wise. But it does worry me that the developer just couldn't make a commitment. You know, and I just think that that is wrong. So I will be voting against the development.
Do we have any more comments? No. Can we move to a vote, please? Again, by show of hands, so people for the officer's recommendation. That's passed, thank you very much. We'll go to a break now, I think.
Thank you Chair.
Can we be back for about 22? Sarah, please.
Thank you Chair. This slide shows the red line boundary for the site, which is accessed by the Davie industrial estate, which lies to the west of the site. There's a railway line to the north and there are residential properties on Handsworth Avenue to the south. This is an aerial view showing the site. I think it was taken in 2021. As can be seen from the image, the site was formally characterised by landscape and trees. You can perhaps make out from that image that the majority of the trees and the larger trees were around the perimeter of the site. The central part of the site has been cleared and engineering works comprising of cut and fill have taken place to form two level plateaus within the site. And it's those engineering works which are the subject of this application. This image is taken from the west, from the industrial buildings, and it shows the cleared site. So the site is largely cleared and levelled. And you can see the trees around the perimeter of the site which have been retained. This is another image from a similar viewpoint but showing some landscaping within the site as well. And then this is again taken from the west, looking more towards the south of the site. So the trees there are from the southern boundary of the site and the residential properties on Handsworth Avenue are beyond those trees. On this site, you can make out the embankment which cuts across the middle of the site. Sort of where the colours change in the surfacing is where the land levels change and where the different plateaus are formed. And on this image, you can make out the houses on Handsworth Avenue beyond the trees along the boundary. And then this final image is a view back into the industrial estate, just showing the character of that industrial estate which the site is accessed from. This is an existing site plan showing the site and the range of different embankments which were to the north and south and adjacent to the industrial buildings. And this is the proposed site plan which demonstrates two separate plateaus and embankments which run around the perimeter of the site in a U shape. Some cross-sections here which show the original levels prior to the works being undertaken and the levels now. And these are at a greater scale, showing the sections of the site. And these levels are based on a recent topographical survey of the site following the works that have been undertaken. This image shows the proposed landscape works. So you can see the plateaus formed within the site and then the landscaping around the edges, which is to be retained and enhanced. This is a topographical survey showing the levels on the site as existing following the works which have been undertaken. And this is a tree survey which assesses the trees around the perimeter of the site. And finally, this tree survey shows the majority of the trees to the edges of the site to be retained. Plus the blue line shows the tree protection line. So the site is within a fringe industry and business area and this allocation is continued in the draft plan where the site is, will fall within an employment zone. And it is also allocated as an employment site. Permission is sought for the engineering works to level the site to create these level plateaus. The application is solely for the engineering works and it doesn't propose any future use or development of the site in terms of buildings or any particular use. Anything of that nature will be subject to a separate application. So we're just looking at the engineering works which have taken place to date. As mentioned previously, prior to clearance works, the central part of the site was characterised by trees and vegetation. Although it is noted that the trees were previously cleared from the central part of the site in 2017, these have then obviously regrown in the intervening period between 2017 and when the site was cleared again in 2023. So the aerial image that you saw was dated 2021 and it showed that the site had sort of revegetated. Although the central part, the trees there were obviously much more immature than the ones in the perimeter. The trees were not subject to any pre-preservation orders or their retention secured in any other way such as through conditions on previous applications. And so the clearance of the site and the removal of the trees in and of themselves wouldn't require planning consent. The most mature trees are sited to the edges of the site and these will be retained. This will be secured by condition. And as mentioned previously, there'll be further planting within those landscaped areas surrounding the perimeter of the site. And again, that will be secured by condition. The clearance of the site has resulted in the loss of biodiversity and the applicant has submitted information to show the value of the site prior to it being cleared versus the value of it now. And the clearance has resulted in the loss of 8.17 habitat units. The agent has suggested that these units will be replaced off-site and a condition is attached requiring full details of how a net gain will be achieved. Her preliminary ecological assessment has also been submitted with the application and that has identified some protected species on the site. The survey was undertaken after the clearance works and the habitats were shown to have survived the clearance works. The habitats had been retained and there was evidence that they were still in use. Although the works will have removed some of the foraging areas for those species, the species have been tracked and their movements have been shown to be predominantly along the rear boundary of the site with the residential properties, with the animals travelling into the open space which is to the south-west of the site. The survey also identifies some trees with bat roosting potential and these are to be retained. In total, there's been 20 objections which cover a range of issues and they are comprehensively set out in the officer report. There's also a supplementary report and I'll just draw your attention to that. So there's been an additional letter of representation. The points raised have predominantly been raised in the previous representations and have been considered in the report. But just to draw attention to a couple of points that haven't been considered previously. So the representation states that there are some inaccuracies in the report in that the levelling works are not complete and that there'd be further disruption should further works be undertaken. So we have clarified with the agent as to whether the works have been completed. And essentially, the majority of the levelling and excavation works have been completed. And the information that we've now got, the topographical surveys and sections are based upon the levels of the site now and that is what we would be approving. But there are some minor works to be undertaken to the sort of western, eastern portion of the site. So if I just go back to the images. You can see the two coloured surfaces. So the area with the lighter coloured surface, the minor works would be undertaken to that area of the site and would basically be sort of smoothing works and surfacing in a rubble, surfacing like the darker surface that you can see in the forefront of that image. And then just another point to raise with regards to the representation. The representation raises concerns about the biodiversity offsetting being done in Derbyshire and stated that this should be local. And so in order to just discuss that further and to clarify what's written in the report, the report states that 8.7 units should be required. But it's noted that if the units were to be provided outside of Sheffield, that the BNG regulations would require a spatial risk multiplier. So essentially, if units are provided outside of the local area, then more units are required. So I just wanted to clarify that as a point and condition three covers that and will allow for us to secure either the 8.17 units locally or the additional units should the provision be outside of the local area. And then there's a few conditions that were missed off in the agenda. It's just a drafting error for some reason, they weren't pulled through properly. So the additional conditions relate to landscaping, contamination, protected species, so an exclusion zone for protected species and retention of trees and drainage. So they're just there for reference. And I think that's everything.
Thanks Sarah. We have one speaker, speaker against the application, which is Andrea, please. Press the button on the right, you've got five minutes.
Okay. Right, I've not really prepared a speech because I wasn't going to come until my boss let me off this afternoon. But I'll just go through it as quickly as I can. I'm representing my neighbours that live on Handsworth Avenue and our homes I'm representing my neighbours that live on Hansworth Avenue and our home's back on to what used to be, it looked like a woodland to us. That probably is the later picture. In 2017, one weekend, I looked out of my kitchen window and I could see big industrial diggers and tree cutters that came along and just ransacked the middle of that area. This was in 2017. We didn't know what to do to stop them and we thought, this can't be right, it's not just one tree, it's lots and lots of trees where we see wildlife day in, day out. So we phoned the 111, sorry, 101, the police, and they sent a wildlife officer as soon as they could, this was 2017. He took it up and we didn't really know what had happened after that, but we know that the development stopped. Then in 2023, everything had gone peaceful in between time and the trees were coming back. In 2023, this scenario happened again and we saw the diggers back when we weren't expecting it and the next thing we knew, they had really gone and just flattened this whole area of trees without telling anyone. It's an area where nobody can really see. Yes, it probably is an industrial area further back where the factory is, but in front of the factory, for many, many years, one of my neighbours, he was actually born in one of the houses in 1938, and he remembers the trees and the wildlife and the protected species. He said people knew about those protected species when he was young. So they're quite ancient places for these animals. So that was... Then we got the police involved again and they said, we can't find our file from 2017 because we've gone on a different system, but we will look. And then they set up the cameras and things to look for the protected species and found that they were still there. And they asked, because this developer hadn't got an ecology report at all at this stage, they just did it without anyone knowing or did it off their own accord. And then they went and got, afterwards, they were told they must get this report done retrospectively. So that's when they went and got the ecologist's report. So the ecologist's report probably doesn't show the full extent of what it was prior to them coming in. But now, we're just all worried because we know that there's these species there. We used to see all different types of wildlife in the air and on the ground. I'm not allowed to say certain things, but we do know there's quite a lot there and we're worried about them. We're worried about, we can't look outside now and see nice woodland, it's all just flattened. And what we are worried about is it's not actually done yet. The work is still just loads of rubble, bricks, and the developer told us it was putting up a provisional fence and agreed it with, I think, planning and the police, that he wasn't going to go past the fence until the planning was decided. So that fence is still there and there is still a lot of rubble on the area where we know the protected species are. So that's what we're concerned about. We're also concerned about the soil itself. There's been mentions previously in 2017 that there was asbestos nearer the site of the factory that they're going to be digging up. And lots of things like noise pollution, light pollution, because now we can see and hear the factory a lot more than what we could before because the trees were a buffer to all that. And yeah, just generally, everybody's a bit dismayed that this might be getting granted. So I don't think there's anything much more to say, really.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you.
Can you just press the button again? Sarah.
Thank you. So just to pick up on a few points that were raised there. And firstly, in terms of the tree removal, as stated before, that that wouldn't have required planning permission because the trees aren't protected and the most mature trees around the perimeter of the site have been retained. With regards to the preliminary ecological appraisal report, that does consider a whole range of species and obviously was carried out after the site was largely cleared, but does consider what would have likely to have been on that site. With regards to the protected species that are already using the site and the concerns about how any further works, which may, you know, slight works to the west of the site may affect them. The ecological report does identify an exclusion zone around the habitat for those protected species and we have suggested a condition which requires that exclusion zone to be respected and for there to be no works at all within that exclusion zone to prevent any disturbance to those animals. In terms of views, obviously, a view is not protected in terms of planning legislation, but in any event, the trees around the perimeter of the site have been retained, so there is still that sort of green boundary and green screen. In terms of contamination, there is a condition requiring details of the land and the sort of top layer of soil and we were asking for investigations into what that top layer contains essentially to understand the contamination risks there. I think that's most topics covered.
I'm sorry, Andrea, now you've had your five minutes, you know, unfortunate, thank you. Mike, members' questions?
Thank you, Chair. Perhaps I can tease out a few of these issues that the speaker raised. For those of us who were on-site yesterday, we were viewing it in the winter months, so the amount of screening there was not as strong. Some parts are better protected than others. I'm particularly concerned about the, I take it, this is north-south on the picture. So the southern end, just a little to the right, south-east, that would be, it did look more bare than some other parts as you looked up the backs of the gardens of the homes on Hansworth Avenue. And I would be concerned, well, I would like to see better screening there. I'd also like to know what the depth is of that screening for the homes that back on to the site. Are we talking about 10 metres, 15 metres or what exactly? So that's the first thing. Could we just have a, can you just remind us what the status of the land is at that site? As the speaker said, it had been, that northern end had been wooded for, well, for decades. But it would be useful to know where it sits. I know the plan is going out of date, but the Sheffield plan, what it is there. And I noticed that some of the, there's reference to mature trees on the site. It'd be useful to know how old those trees are. I suppose that ties in with the previous question. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll try and cover all of those. So yeah, you can see from this image as well that there is a little bit of a gap where you can just see a couple of houses popping through. So the landscape screening on that particular section wasn't as strong as the other elements of the site. There is a condition requiring details of a landscape scheme and as part of that, we would expect enhanced planting. So that can be something which can be considered as part of that. In terms of the landscape depth... So that image there is probably the best one and that shows the landscaping. I haven't actually measured it, so I couldn't tell you an exact depth and I wouldn't want to guess too much in case I got it wrong. But obviously, it's quite a depth. I would probably say it's in the region of about 10 metres judging from that image, but like I said, I haven't measured that. Thank you. In terms of the site, it is, in the unitary development plan, it's allocated as a fringe industry and business area. In the draft local plan, obviously, we're given that very limited weight, it is an employment zone and the site is actually allocated as an employment site. With regards to the trees and reference to mature trees, a tree survey has been submitted with the application and it has assessed the trees and it found all the trees actually to be category C trees around the perimeter of the site. So although they are potentially mature and potentially have been there for a long time, the category of them for whatever reason is actually just category C.
Well, I thought we might get some years, but I suppose you'd have to look at the tree rings, wouldn't you? But clearly, they've been there for, some of them have been there for many decades, but others, I accept, would be newer growth. The asbestos removal was flagged up as well, or rather asbestos on the site. Is that a planning, is that material planning consideration?
No, it's not. So asbestos would be covered under different legislation, it's not something we would consider in planning terms.
I'll let the others have a bite of the cherry.
I have Brian next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So a number of residents are saying the levelling works are not complete and residents and wildlife are going to experience more disruption should further works be undertaken. So there is, what I see has been a new condition, that no works, including vegetation clearance or planting, shall take place prior to the agreement of an exclusion zone. So is that reassurance to the planning committee and to residents that there's going to be no more work until that's sorted, that aspect's sorted? That's one of my questions.
That's the intention, yes. So if I just read the condition, so it states, within 60 days of the date of this permission, full details of the exclusion zone for protected species, as detailed in their preliminary ecological appraisal prepared by Peak Ecology, shall be submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. No works, including vegetation clearance or planting, shall take place to be... Shall take place, I think the wording is slightly altering there, within the exclusion zone until that agreement has taken place and thereafter no work shall take place within the exclusion zone. So yeah, that is essentially there to make sure that until we've got the information of that exclusion zone and until it's marked out, that there shouldn't be any further works on the site.
Thank you. So a figure of 1% is mentioned. Why 1%? Because there's reference to a paragraph in connection with that in the NPPF, which is paragraph 185, I think. But I couldn't find any reference to a 1%. So why is it 1%? And the second part is, why Derbyshire?
So the NPPF requires a net gain, but it doesn't specify what that net gain should be. So 1% is a net gain. Obviously, the BNG mandatory regime requires 10%, but this application is excluded from that 10% because the works were carried out prior to that in November 2023 and that only became mandatory in April 2024. So in terms of them providing a 1% net gain, it meets the requirements of the policy and would be considered to be acceptable. In terms of Derbyshire, so the policy again requires, there's a hierarchy, so it's avoidance, mitigation, compensation. So where we are in that hierarchy, I suppose, is the mitigation-compensation area. And looking towards the mandatory regime, that allows off-site units to be purchased and it does incentivise local provision of units and it does that by essentially allowing you to replace like-for-like within the local area. But it does allow units to be purchased further afield, but it does incentivise that by applying a multiplier so that if you are purchasing in neighbouring local authorities, you have to purchase one and a half times the number of units. If it's further afield, you have to purchase even more. So whilst the application states that the units may be bought in Derbyshire, and I'm not entirely sure why they've suggested Derbyshire, we have put a condition on there requiring further details. And obviously, in terms of incentivising local provision, the incentive is that they would have to purchase less if they bought them locally rather than from further afield. But I don't think we can go much further in sort of specifying Sheffield in excluding any other area because the mandatory regime does allow for those purchases elsewhere.
Okay. So based on the answers, was more than 1% discussed with the developer? Or, because it seems like an incredibly low figure.
Because the policy just requires a net gain and that's what's been put forward, that's what has been agreed.
Who put it forward?
The developer.
And that wasn't suggested, and fight, that is incredibly wild.
We can ask for more, obviously, but we can't insist upon it because the policy requires a net gain, so that's what has been achieved in this case.
Thank you. One very last thing, which is, so the biodiversity net gain credits, I think they're called, are going to be within Derbyshire. Does Sheffield have authority, does Sheffield Council have authority within Derbyshire to monitor the use of those credits and make sure that it's happening?
So the units themselves, when they're purchased, they're purchased from a habitat bank and that habitat bank monitors and ensures that those units are maintained for 30 years. So in buying a unit, we would require evidence that those units have been bought and that they've been allocated to this site and this site alone. They wouldn't then be bought again and used for another site. And as part of the purchase of that, they are securing them for 30 years.
Thank you for that. I just, you know, the reason I'm asking that question is, you know, Derbyshire is a different planning authority and, you know, I wanted to make sure that monitoring could happen, yeah.
Diane, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think Brian's asked and answered one because I did want to ask why can't we insist that the units are purchased and used on-site, you know, we can see evidence of it. But that's asked and answered. There was mention of rubble around species habitats and that that would be in the exclusion zone until the biodiversity study was complete. If there is rubble around habitats, would the removal of that and the reinstatement of the habitat be part of and subject to that habitat management plan?
So in terms of the exclusion zone around the protected species, I don't believe that there's any rubble within that exclusion zone at the moment because the ecological appraisal does state that that exclusion zone has been adhered to. And they've seen evidence that it has been marked on the ground with some kind of tape essentially, I think, and that it hasn't been disturbed and that that exclusion zone has been retained. The problem that I've got is that I haven't seen any evidence of, you know, where exactly that is, they've not shown that in a plan and that's what we're asking for. So I don't think that it's been disturbed at the moment, but we will just make sure with that condition that we've got the exact details of where it is and we can monitor that if needed.
Mark, please.
The lady who spoke has pointed out that the...
The lady who spoke has pointed out that they were reported to the authorities twice causing work to halt. They've effectively been caught out avoiding planning applications, hence it being a retrospective planning application. How would you answer those who would ask that this recommendation is actually rewarding bad practice?
Thank you. We can't really assess the behaviour in terms of it being carried on without planning permission. All we can assess is the planning application and the merits of the scheme as it stands, regardless of whether it's retrospective because they didn't know they needed permission or for whatever other reason, they haven't submitted an application. It would be reasonable for us to kind of come to a different conclusion. Really, we need to come to a conclusion based upon the merits of the scheme itself and that's what we've done.
Henry?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, firstly, just so I can better understand the nature of the sort of habitat, especially what species would confine themselves to the perimeter woodland? Are we not mentioning? No. Well, that's answered that one. And then sort of following on from councillor Whitaker's point, I take it the role of the Planning Committee is not to issue any sort of punitive penalties against someone for what seems like a really egregious breach of what's right. Is there any other enforcement that the authority can take or pursue against this? Because I do agree that it would send out a message that in these instances, you're better off begging forgiveness than seeking permission, which is a road we should be going down.
We're essentially assessing the scheme on its merits. If members have got concerns that the merits of the scheme are not acceptable, then that's, I suppose, a different conversation potentially. But the recommendation is for approval and we've assessed the application against planning policies and all material planning considerations have come to the conclusion that the scheme is acceptable regardless of the fact that it's retrospective.
Would it be beyond the remit of the committee to seek a higher figure than 1% on the gain?
Vicky wants to cover this point.
Thank you Chair. There's no provision in terms of applying different policy complaints in respect of retrospective application. Obviously, what we're trying not to be sought here is to regularise the position. There's no punitive sort of elements to that. But the government have recognised that it has been a problem. And I understand now that the fees associated with retrospective applications are higher than before. There was no, you know, almost there was no incentive to, you know, put in an application. But now through the planning application fees, that's what the government have sought to do is that, you know, they're being challenged through that planning application fee to, you know, to be better off to do it beforehand rather than be retrospective.
I think that's a proposal rather than yet been implemented.
Apologies for that, they have recognised that this is an issue and that's how they're hoping to address it, through higher application fees rather than, you know, changing the planning merits of the case based on whether it's retrospective or not. Thank you.
Goodness.
Yes, thank you Chair. When we were going around the site yesterday, it's been partially cleared and there were big piles of rubble. So I was expecting to see on your slides old buildings, but there aren't any old buildings. We presumed the rubble had come from things that had been already knocked down. So that seems to me stuff that's been imported, rubble that's been brought onto site. And you're on, in your additional conditions for contamination, you're asking for items that are brought in to be inspected for contamination. But that's already on site and it might already be contaminated, the stuff that's been brought in.
The condition relates to more kind of the final surfacing and covering in terms of how the site will be left, if any sodas are imported or any finishing materials, rather than those, you're right, there were some piles of bricks and I'm not sure where they had come from, to be honest. But I don't think we would expect those to be subject to the contamination survey. They were just piles of bricks essentially.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, historically, was this an industrial site or was it woodland? I mean, I know going back to a few centuries, it'll be woodland, but was it ever industrial? Because judging from what we saw, it looked as if some buildings had just recently been knocked down.
From the information that I've seen, I've not seen any buildings on the site. I've just seen it as woodland. I haven't gone, you know, decades and decades back, but certainly over the last sort of 20 or 30 years, I think I've seen aerial images that suggest that it was woodland.
Thank you.
Brian?
Thank you. I'd just like to raise this, the 1% once more and say that cases of mitigation might well happen again as site is cleared. So should we be looking at that 1% and raising it?
My advice would be that in terms of where we stand with policy, the policy requires a net gain and 1% is a net gain. So my advice would be that that is sufficient, but members may take a different view.
Chair, just wanted to make the point that at the moment, this doesn't come to the mandatory scheme because as we said, it's pre-mandatory. But the government again have realised that this is sort of creating this issue and they are hoping to address bringing these retrospective applications under the mandatory scheme. But from what I've read at the moment, the reason why it's not currently the case is because the mandatory scheme deals with it through pre-commencement conditions. But obviously, where you've got a retrospective application, you can't really have a pre-commencement condition, it's already commenced. So they are looking at how to make it the mandatory scheme, which as members are aware is 10%. So, you know, my advice would be that, you know, the council haven't got a policy position, but in due course, it's planned that it will come under the mandatory scheme, which will be 10%.
In the absence of a policy position on this, could I propose that we condition 10%?
And so I'd like to second that.
Could I just come in here? I think going back to the training we had a little earlier on today, that your decisions are based on the development plan and the policies within that, or national policy. So the national policy, in this instance, tells us that a net gain is required. And our local policies tell us that, well, there is no policy position other than I think it seeks to no net loss. There will be, in the emerging plan, there will be a 10% requirement, I believe, for BNG. But at the moment, the local policies and the national policy don't specify 10%. So we don't have a policy basis for requiring that 10%. So we wouldn't be able to make, the decision wouldn't be then be in accordance with the development plan or national policy.
Could we not view the divergence between the position of retrospective and future planning applications as a policy basis?
That's not a loophole that's been closed yet, it's a discussion as far as I know. It's not something that's been, that we know is definitely, I mean, it's something that they want to resolve, but we don't know when or if it will be.
So we have a bit of a policy vacuum is what the answer is?
In relation to retrospective applications and in relation to sort of pre-mandatory BNG applications, it is. But, you know, as Vicky suggests, we're hopeful that loophole will be closed, but it's not closed at the moment. So it'd be a bit of a leap, I think, to sort of, to ask for 10% because it wouldn't be, there'd be no policy basis for that.
I'd like to suggest that 1% is very low and I think a number of other people would probably agree with that round the room?
I think it's a frustration that we all feel, but bearing in mind, there's still going to be at least 8.7% additional BNG units to compensate for the loss and an extra 1% gain. So we should end up with slightly more than was there.
No further questions? Can we move to comments, please?
We did have a mover in a second.
No, because we're not doing it. All right, are you withdrawing your? Right, so what's just been?
I think if you're bearing in mind that, again, the training, the tests, the conditions and the reasonfulness and the possibility, I think our recommendation would be that that there is no policy basis to ask for 10% in this instance, which is unfortunate, but.
I completely appreciate where Diana's coming from and will reluctantly withdraw what I thought was quite a sensible suggestion.
Thank you, Henry. Comments? Richard?
Thank you Chair. I mean, I have to admit, I find this whole process of trashing an area in one part of the city and replacing it with something not even in the city are very unsatisfactory. I just don't think, it's missing the point of having biodiversity areas in certain locations, especially in, I mean, we call ourselves the Green City, but there are parts of Sheffield that aren't, that struggle to have any greenery and I suspect this is one of them. So I think that it's just not an equitable situation for me. That's a comment, I can't go anywhere with it, but I just wanted to say it to get it off my chest, thank you.
Thank you Chair. If councillor Williams will recall, yesterday on the site visits, when we did quiz Sarah on this and we were advised that in Sheffield, we have not yet come up with our own biodiversity credits within this city. I would hope members will be supporting.
I'll just correct that, I did tell you that yesterday, but I found out today that there is a site registered in Sheffield for biodiversity units.
Would that then allow us to encourage the applicant to look to Sheffield first before going to Derbyshire? Because this is good news.
Well, the condition, as set out, condition three, requires the applicant to consider onsite first because obviously that would be better. And then following that, it requires an appropriate amount of units. And as I mentioned earlier, if they're provided locally, they have to provide less. If they're provided in a neighbouring authority, they have to provide more. So that in itself should incentivise them to provide it locally. And I think that's probably as far as we could go with it really, given that the mandatory regime does allow this situation where you can provide them with the neighbouring authorities, albeit that you have to provide more.
Well, on the basis that we are most likely to approve the officer's recommendation, given the way the discussion has gone, I would encourage officers to remind the applicant that they do have that option to buy the credits in Sheffield. That would be really welcome, I think, by all members around the table. I think we are where we are with this. I appreciate there's a big frustration on the part of the residents on Hansworth Avenue. But I think we have little option but to accept the recommendation as it is. And if they do, if the applicant does at a future date decide to put some buildings on this site, then I will look forward to see that 10% biodiversity net gain at that time. But I think we've all got frustrations with the planning system as it is, applied to retrospective applications. But I think we are where we are. Thank you.
Richard?
Just for clarification, unfortunately, I couldn't make the site visit yesterday due to personal circumstances. So you might have thought I was keeping a low profile, but it was a very low profile yesterday. Otherwise, I wouldn't have missed that good news.
I apologise, Richard.
Mark?
Yes, I'd just like to point out that despite what I, well, my reluctance about the idea of rewarding this bad practice, it takes something very substantial to go against an officer's recommendation. And therefore, I hope you will understand that although I've made those comments, I do feel compelled to go with what the officer is recommending.
Do we have any more comments? I'll move to the vote then, please, again, by sheer hands. Vote for the officer's recommendation, please. That's passed, thank you very much. Item 10, Record of Planning Appeal Submission Decisions, page, what else have we agenda? Nothing to note.
And if there's any questions, Chair?
Thank you. The date and time of the next meeting will be Tuesday, 14th January 2025 at 2pm in the town hall. Thank you very much for your time.